Good evening. It is 6:31, and I'm going to call the Town Council Special Meeting Agenda to order for October 29, 2024. All are present except for Counselor Parker. Is she online by any chance?
Not at this point.
No?
I'll tell you when she arrives.
Okay, thank you. We have a -- first up is the public hearing. Since we don't have our clerk here, does the whole public hearing need to be read out loud, Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Would you like a counselor to read that, or would you like to read it?
I can read it.
Okay.
Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Town of Groton, Connecticut, the town, on October 29, 2024, at 6:30 p.m., or as soon thereafter as practicable, in the Groton Town Hall annex 134 Groton Long Point Road, Groton, Connecticut, regarding the proposed issuance by the Public Finance Authority, the issuer, of its qualified 501(c)(3) bonds as defined in Section 145 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, as amended the code, in one or more series from time to time pursuant to a plan of financing in an amount not to exceed $32,500,000, the bonds. The public hearing is required by Section 147f of the code. The proceeds from the sale of the bonds will be used to make a loan to CFC GCO LLC, an Arizona Limited Liability Company, the borrower, who's sole member is Community Finance Corporation, the corporate -- or corporation, an Arizona nonprofit corporation, in order to pay for all or a portion of the costs, a) to acquire and improve essential residential rental housing facilities located in the town, facilities, b) to fund any required reserves, c) to fund capitalized interest on the bonds, if any, and d) to finance costs of issuance of the bonds collectively, the project. On the date of issuance of the bonds, the facilities will be owned by the borrower and will be located at 99 Gold Star Highway, Groton, Connecticut. The bonds, including the principal, premium, if any, and interest thereon, do not constitute a debt or loan of credit or a pledge of full faith and credit or taxing power of the issuer or the town. The bond shall not constitute directly or indirectly, or contingently obligate or otherwise constitute a general obligation of or a charge against the general credit of the issuer or the town, but shall be special limited obligations of the issuer payable solely from the resources provided for in the proceedings for the issuance of the bonds. The corporation was organized and is operated in order to develop, manage, and/or operate public buildings, monuments, or works for government agencies such as municipal, county, state, university, and other public entities or political subdivisions, and nonprofit and exempt organizations described under Section 501(c)(3) of the code. The borrower is organized exclusively to further the state charitable purposes of the Community Finance Corporation, which specifically includes, among other purposes, the erecting, financing, and maintaining buildings, including without limitation, rental housing. The borrower has represented that the project is intended to serve the purpose of providing safe and sanitary housing for persons and families of low and moderate income in the town, and promoting the health, welfare, and prosperity of all citizens of the town. At the time set for the public hearing, interested persons will be given a reasonable opportunity to express their views on the merits of the project, the location of the facilities, the issuance of the bonds, the plan of financing, and the proposed action of the borrower or related matters. The receipt of citizens' petition is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign in the sheet on the table at the front of the meeting. When you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton to speak during this portion of the meeting. If you are a Zoom, please email council@grotonct.gov by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Date of notice, October 9, 2024, Town of Groton.
Thank you. So this is the portion where we will take comments from citizens on the public hearing. Thank you, Counsel Russ, appreciate it. And there -- nobody has signed up. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this topic? All right, I don't see anybody. So we will move to close the public hearing, and the council will now go into recess, and we will begin the committee -- our committee of the whole meeting. So I start this just like I'm -- so, good evening. It is 6:37. Calling the Town Council Committee, the whole regular meeting to order on October 29, 2024. We are all present except for Counselor Parker. And Counselor Parker is not online, is that correct?
She just texted that -- that's someone else, that staff. She texts, she'll be just momentarily.
Okay.
I'll notify you soon she arrives.
Thank you very much. All right, up first is Calendar and Communications. Counsel Merritt, do you have anything you would like to share today?
Oh, no, I don't.
Thank you. Counsel Bordelon.
Thank you. I just want to say it was really nice to attend the MLK Dinner, something that's been around for a long time. I've had some friends that were recipients over the years, and been going for, I don't know, near -- it was crazy when I thought about it, over 20-something years, missing a few along the way, obviously, due to other obligations, but I think it's definitely a worthwhile event, if you've never attended, to listen to some of the testimony of some of our youth, and I think the funds are a great asset to all the districts that benefit and the students, and it's really great when we see some of the students come back that were recipients of the scholarship. So it was just a great night. Many counselors up here were in attendance, and I attended a Board of Ed meeting, and I think that's all I have for my communications.
Thank you. Counsel Pacino.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just like to remind everybody who's watching and listening that we have early voting going on right now. Take advantage of it. Up until 3 o'clock this afternoon, we've already had 52 -- 5,272 votes cast between early voting and absentee, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Counsel Russk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended quite a few things this -- the last two weeks. Personnel and Appointments Committee was on the 15th with Chair Jones and Counsel Gajewski. I also was honored to be able to attend the Dr. Martin Luther King Scholarship Trust Fund Dinner. If you are interested in providing funds for that, you can do so online. If you have not been able to do so, if that is something you can do. All of the students were very inspiring, very honored to watch them, and just amazed at these young people. I also was able to attend Law Enforcement Night at the Elks with -- who was all there? Counsel Gajewski, Counsel Jones, Counsel Parker, Mayor Franco. Again, congratulations to everyone who was honored. And then on the 29th, so earlier today, we had our Public Safety Committee meeting with Counsel Pacino and Counsel Merritt, and that meeting was to discuss or to determine a standardized funding policy for Groton Ambulance and Mystic River Ambulance. Bob Holdsworth of Holdsworth Group was in attendance for both of the meetings. There was one on September 17, and then one tonight, and we have our next meeting scheduled for November 19 at 4:30. I highly suggest that everyone take some time and watch the meetings so that you can get some of the background information, especially tonight's meeting, and then the next meeting will talk more about dollars and cents. So that's it.
Thank you. All right, Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also, along with other counselors, attended the MLK Scholarship Dinner, which was a very nice event to go to. This past Friday, we did the Law Enforcement Night at the Elks Clubs, and congratulations to Officer Ryan Brower, I think I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Brower.
Brower, who was the Town of Groton Police Officer Honored, that was great. As a -- I am the Town Council Representative for the Peacock Woods, and so I conducted my Peacock Woods Walk. We all have to take a walk, so I done -- did that this past Sunday, and then I did the most important thing that you can do, is I voted. So I encourage everybody, just like Counsel Pacino, to get out and vote. We still can -- we'll have early voting till November 3, and it's 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. So I encourage everybody to go and do your duty, and it's -- I think everybody's working hard, and it's an excellent thing to do, so that's it.
Thank you. Counsel McBride.
Thank you. First off, I want to give my thoughts and prayers to go out to the family and friends of the four boys that were involved in the tragic accident a few weeks ago. It was an unbelievable, terrible event, and the one thing I do want to say is it was great to see the fundraising efforts that this community has put together, and the community support behind all the families that are involved in that. On October 11, I participated in CCM's Joint Policy Committee meeting. I can't read my handwriting that well. Oh, yeah, the basic -- the focus of it was basically coastal resiliency and flooding, and what can be done to address the such costs over time that were going to incur -- that will be incurred if we proceed with this coastal resiliency plan. CCM was involved in this, and once again, they recommended municipalities look into implementing a stormwater authority to raise their revenues, which will be needed in the future to pay for what will be large costs to address these situations. I did send this information to Mayor Franco and Town Manager Burt with the hopes that we can possibly get this on a future agenda to discuss. Additional note was that First Selectman/Selectwoman Danielle Cheeseburger was in attendance and had numerous questions, and looked like she appeared to have some interest in going down that road, so it was something that maybe we could look into collaboration with Stonington. I also want to remind everyone that Senator Summers, when she was here, she spoke about the stormwater authority to pursue, and she looked into possibly a regionalization effort to pursue that, so I think that's something hopefully we can consider. Also just -- also met on the CCM Policy Committee on Education, Appropriation, Taxes, and Finance last week. A few things that were pretty important that came out was potential modifications to the MBR, which is the minimum budget requirement related to the education costs, to exclude the MBR, to exclude those costs in the MBR. They also had some situations to allow towns and cities to diversify and develop their own revenue streams. In addition to the property tax, as some such examples that came about was a dedication of the portion of the sales tax revenue the state receives would go to the towns, and also a certain percentage, possibly 1% of meals and beverage taxes within the own town would go to the town's coffers. So that was interesting to hear, that legislation maybe going forward. I also met with J.G. Keegan, the consultant the town hired to review Shannon Costant Golf Club's operations and capital needs, and extremely impressed with the work that he did and the knowledge that he had on golf feasibility studies, and looking forward to, you know, hopefully receiving some of his recommendations in the future. Also attended the Martin Luther King Awards tonight, and that was truly, as everyone else had mentioned, a wonderful event, and I look forward to going to it in the future. It was my first time attending that, and I truly had a wonderful time. Also attended the Fitch football games last few weeks, and I wish them the best of luck this Friday night, when they have an important game, if they want to continue to stay in the class of playoffs. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My hearts also go out to the families of that tragic car accident, and I thank our local authorities for addressing that situation and being supportive of the community. This past month, I participated and chaired the first meeting of the Performing Arts Commission. I do want to recognize former Counselors of Fury, as he envisioned that, and we are getting to start great work in regards to possibly finding a performing arts space for the town. And then I also attended the Greater Mr. or of Commerce Celebrate Mystic event. It was a great event, seeing many community members celebrate and just have just a nice, real good social gathering. I also participated in the Safe Futures Walk for Domestic Violence Awareness with Counsel Parker, Counsel Russ, and Counsel Bordelon. I participated in the Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting. I attended the MLK Scholarship Dinner, which was a wonderful evening. I also attended the Police Awards Groton Elks Dinner, and kudos to Ryan Brower for being our Officer of the Year. And then I also, with Counsel Jones, Counsel Parker, and Counsel Russ, participated in the United Way Mobile Food Pantry at St. John's Church, and I also met with the golf consultant, J.G. Keegan. So busy, busy couple of weeks for me, doing a lot around the community. It was good to see many community members. That's it.
I think you still have time, but I think you missed a very important meeting you have with the governor.
Oh, gosh, how did I forget that? I did. I -- thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I got to represent the council with Governor Lamont. He visited Fitch High School and did a town hall with Fitch High School students, and with Representative Bob Gardner and Senator Summers, and it was really great to see the enthusiasm of our young students, and they were -- they asked the governor some really pointed and tough questions, and I ended up having a conversation with a friend of mine on the governor's staff, and they were -- they were not expecting something, so intellectual to come out of that conversation, and they really put him on the spot with some major issues. So that was -- that was a super fun event, and I thank the mayor for selecting me to represent the town for that.
Well, thank you very much. All right, as was mentioned, attended numerous events, including Martin Luther King Dinner, and I'd like to congratulate -- might be saying her name incorrectly -- Mahai Patel from Fitch, who was the recipient from Fitch of a scholarship. I'd like to congratulate Officer Brower for being the Officer of the Year, and which I have invited him to come to our Town Council meeting the first Monday in November to receive a proclamation in response for him being, you know, Officer of the Year. I was contacted by WTNH, who would -- who wanted an interview about the ATV ordinance. There's much interest in that. Attended the golf course consultant interview. I was very -- thank you for -- Counsel Gajewski, for attending and representing our council with the governor. He had been in Groton and attended an event at the subbase, as well as Electric Boat, and then went off to Fitch and had a question and answer with the students there. Also, I would like to say that it was, you know, our council had come up with a statement that we released to the media about the accident involving the four youths, and I'd like to read it. It was -- this is from our council. "Our hearts go out to the families and friends of the teenager who lost his life tragically Monday morning. Our thoughts are also with the teenagers involved in this incident. We thank our local and regional emergency services for their caring and supportive response. This tragedy has sent shockwaves of grief throughout our community and will undoubtedly have a lasting impact. As this tragedy affects the entire community, particularly one as close knit as Groton, may we come together to offer our support and condolences to all who have been affected." And that is from our council. All right, that's what -- oh, and one more thing, there was a Halloween event in Mystic, and it goes from the Groton side to the Stonington side, and it's put on by the Mystic Chamber of Commerce, and from what I understand, there was over 1,000 people, families with children, and it was quite this, you know, spectacle, and with so many people in attendance, and I hear it was a wonderful event, and I'm really happy that we're having such wonderful community events. Okay, on to approval of minutes. This is in our COW packet on page two. Counsel Gajewski, would you like to take that one?
Yes. Item 2024-916, October 8, 2024, Minutes. Motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of October 8, 2024. So moved.
Second, Jones.
Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Jones. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes? Okay, not seeing any. We'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, that passes seven to one to zero, with Bordelon opposed. Up next is New Business. We are on 2024-820-3, which is 99 Gold Star Highway. This in our packet is on page 10. Counsel McBride, would you like to take that one?
Sure. Item 2024-820, 99 Gold Star Highway. I'd like to make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the issuance of tax-exempt revenue bonds to CFG-GCO LLC through the Public Finance Authority, and to authorize the town manager to execute any necessary associated paperwork.
Second, Bordelon. All right, that was moved by McBride, seconded by Bordelon. Do you have any comments? Counsel Bordelon.
I had a question, actually. You know, so it says that, you know, first of all, I'm really excited to see repurposing of a building because I do believe, from an environmental standpoint, there's nothing worse than you see development come in and they just clear out a lot, and we have all these empty lots that aren't being repurposed, and I, you know, I really love to see buildings that are being reused before, you know, getting rid of some of our natural resources and trees, you know, first, so it's great. So I applaud the developer on that end. It's a great repurposing. I also am very impressed with the fact that this is, you know, going to be set aside with the AMI, you know, 40%, I guess, of the housing is going to be left for income-driven based on the HUD standards. So my question, though, is what, when we say 40%, I'm sorry, is there some?
No.
You wanted to point out that Counselor.
I didn't know it was extracting down here. I didn't know what was going on.
Sorry, I've lost your time.
Okay. I didn't know if there was something I should be saying. There -- if 40%, what is that going to look like as far as numbers go? So it's one thing to say 40%, but I really -- is that 10 units? Is that 50 units? How many units really will 40% be set aside for income-driven housing? That's my question.
David Mitchell will join us from Good Homes.
Good evening.
Good to be back. But to answer you specifically the question, and I'll hand out the information packets, which are very similar to what we did, what I handed out before, there are 112 units at Good Homes, Groton, and so 40% of those units, roughly 45 units, are being set aside at 60% for individuals or families, up to 60% of AMI, of average mean income.
Thank you for answering that. So, yeah, so it's, you know, I mean, some people are asking, and I just wanted to make sure the notes I had were clear, because it's only 112 units, so it's not like hundreds of units that are being set aside at that 40%, because some folks were excited that 40% was a high number, but with only 112 units, obviously that number is the best, you know, obviously it's something, but it's not a large number that folks were -- but again, I mean, this is low bearing cost on the town, no bearing cost on the town, so it's repurposing, and all we're doing is accepting it, and I'm hoping that the council will find somebody that fits in that area, especially having representation in that income or experience, in that 40% bracket of the folks who meet the AMI experience, and possibly maybe some military representation on there, because there's a lot of transient housing here for military folks, and understanding the needs of our military in this community is very vital, as well as our workforce readiness with EB. So I'm hoping that some form of that representation that you offered is going to be represented on this committee, because I think that is going to be a large use of this type of housing, in my personal opinion. Probably a lot of young, single men and women, sailors, and people that are working, coming to work in EB, so that's kind of the vision I see. But again, I thank you for this, and I'm interested to see how this goes. Don't have much experience with it, so hopefully it's a good one for Groton. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other hands, so Counsel Bordelon.
I forgot to add, so when do we need to, I guess, the developer, or through the mayor, through the mayor manager, when do we need to decide on that person, at what point would that happen?
I think you're speaking about the Town of Groton appointing a member for the advisory board.
Correct.
These bonds are expected to be closed towards the end of November, and at that point, the not-for-profit Community Finance Corporation will be the owner of the property, and so I would tell you reasonably thereafter. It would be terrific if -- before would be even better, but reasonably thereafter, if you found the person, it'd be great if you appoint somebody. It does not have to be an employee of the Town of Groton, it could be a layperson as well, so.
Thank you for that.
Are you all set?
Yep.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands, so we'll call for a vote. On 2024-820-3, 99 Gold Star Highway. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Counsel Parker? I didn't hear how you voted.
Yes.
Thank you. That passes nine to zero to zero, and Counsel Parker is now with us. Did anybody get a time on when she arrived?
6:52.
Thank you very much. 6:52, yeah. Okay, we will now take a recess from our COW and reconvene the Town Council Special So we are back into Town Council Special Meeting at 6:57 p.m. All right, so our new business is 2024-820-4, 99 Gold Star Highway. I believe we are on -- Counsel Jones.
Do we read it from this one?
Just the title and the resolves, the two resolves, the two resolves, or just one themselves.
I don't see it on the -- on page two. We're on page six.
Are you on this, this big one?
The small packet.
The small packet.
Right from here.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Item 2024-820, 99 Gold Star Highway. Now therefore be resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Groton as follows. Section 1, the Town Council hereby approves the issuance of the bonds by the issuer. It is the purpose and intent of the Town Council that this resolution constitutes approval of the bonds for the purposes of Section 147f of the Code and Section 66.030411a of the Wisconsin statutes. Section 2, the town manager is hereby authorized and directed to do any and all things and to execute and deliver any and all documents that he deems necessary or advisable in order to carry out, given effect to and comply with the terms and intent of this resolution and the financing approved thereby. Section 3, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage. So moved.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Russ. And this is what we just discussed in our COW. Does anybody have any comments? Counsel Bordelon.
And I think I asked at the last meeting, I just want to be clear, so if this developer decides to turn hands or sell it, how does that work with this issuing of the bond?
To answer your question, we are the developer. At the time the bonds close, the owner of the property would be the Community Finance Corporation, and Community Finance Corporation is a, from the last meeting, as you might recall, is a 20-year-old not-for-profit that whose main focus, I think we had Gary Melenda here from Community Finance Corporation last time, who's main focus is lessening the burdens of government through providing infrastructure, essential housing. The bonds are -- the bonds have a 30-year term, and there is a option in year 10 for the developer to redeem and pay off the bonds, but other than that, you know, the bonds will go for the length of 30 years, and at the end of 30 years, Community Finance Corporation will either sell the property to another not-for-profit or to keep it themselves.
All right, and then my last question, and again, just asking for due diligence to make sure I'm asking these things. If the company was to go bankrupt?
The Community Finance Corporation?
Just in general, like the whole process, somehow some funding or something falls under, how does that work?
Well, the bonds have significant reserves to take it to past the point of stability. The reserves are there for capital expenditures, the reserves are there to oversupport any rent deficiencies, you know, it, when you say it goes bankrupt, I mean, the Community Finance Corporation is a not-for-profit owner of these types of essential Finance Corporation is a not-for-profit owner of these types of essential housing and other type of developments. It's, the bonds themselves are part of a, an offering that's being done by, by Jeffries. I don't, I mean, in a bankruptcy, I mean, the, the bond, I imagine the bondholders who, who are the only, only secured creditor would, would fund another not-for-profit to take over the ownership of the property.
Okay. Because you guys are under multiple LLCs, is that correct? Like the owners, the original, like, there's multiple LLCs, so an LLC could go bankrupt?
But at the, at the, at the point in time the bonds close, Community Finance Corporation is the owner. The developer, in essence, stays as the developer and the, and the asset manager, but the, but the property will be owned by the, by the not-for-profit Community Finance Corporation. I have a slide I can show you, but, you know, it's, it's in the, I reprinted the presentation I did last time, and I could, I could also put up the slide.
Sure, that'd be great, yeah.
If you go to the slide that were, the number eight, number eight.
You know, slide number?
Number eight. Let me just go up one, right there. So at the closing, in the center is the property, 99 Gold, 99 Goldstar Highway. At the top is the owner of the property, which is the Community Finance Corporation, which is the not-for-profit. Good Homes remains as the developer, but not the owner of the property. We are the asset manager of the property. At the bottom, you have the Jeffries Group, which is the investment bank, which is, in essence, responsible for creating the structure of the transaction, it's selling the bonds. And the issuer of the bonds is the Public Finance Authority of the State of Wisconsin. So this is the State of Wisconsin, which is issuing the bonds to be used in the Town of Groton. And the far, I guess, the far left are the bonds themselves, and they're bought by institutional municipal bond funds. Now, last bond offering, Franklin Templeton, Nuveen, Erie Insurance Company, big institutional bond funds are the purchasers of, of these bonds. So that is, that is the structure. And the, the bond buyers are, in essence, providing the monies to, not only for the transaction to happen, but also to secure the transaction with significant reserves, whether it be reserves for interest, whether it be reserves for capital expenditure, whether it be reserves for economic stability of the, of the project.
I guess another question I have, then, is, and this was asked to me as well, so what's the real benefit to an LLC, then? Like, what if you're not owning it at the, you know, and it's all protected under this? What do, how do you guys make money, then? How are you benefiting from this project?
How is Good Homes benefiting from the project?
Yeah. If I'm the LLC, how am I, I mean, I have to have some stake in this, right? Or else it's, I'm wasting my time. You know, I mean, like, if I, if I was an LLC, I wouldn't just be doing this for fun. It would be, there's some money to be made, I would think, right?
So Good Homes is in the business of, if you go to my first slide, Good Homes is in, right there. Good Homes is really in the business of creating these multifamily communities and providing housing at attainable and affordable rates. You know, mainly this crisis was really created starting 25 years ago with the ever-rising cost of construction, and with wage not keeping pace with that, a rising, rise in the cost of construction. And our secret sauce, as it were, is to really buy these kind of obsolete hotel properties and, and vacant senior housing, and transforming them into multifamily communities. We are not a not-for-profit, to get to your point. We developed them, we developed the properties, and in this transaction, we are transferring the ownership to a not-for-profit. And our profit, if you were, is substantially what is in, substantially some of these bonds that are being, which are being sold to the, the larger investment bond funds. So the bond fund had, the bonds that are being sold to the Franklin Templetons and Nuveens of the world, there's an A bond and a B bond. And once those are being paid off with interest, there's a C bond, which we, which we will have. But we don't receive monies from the C bonds until the A bond and the B bond have been paid and their interests have been paid. So, you know, our return is very, very far behind the A and the B bond.
And then my last, I think my last question. And you always work with the same nonprofit, so they buy this, and then you transfer it to a nonprofit. Do you guys own the nonprofit?
No.
And so how do you pick your nonprofit? Does it change every state that you go to? Or is this nonprofit just, you know, one that you pick, or do you kind of only work with one?
We only done one transaction with Community Finance Corporation, which was in Erie, Pennsylvania. If you go to, if you go to the slide, down, 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 I think it's slide nine. So in April of this past year, we did a municipal bond offering very similar to this in Erie, Pennsylvania. There, the issue was the Erie County Redevelopment Authority. And in, in Erie, there was a building that was built as, as a Hilton Hotel in 1976. We are converting that into 197 studio units. The nice thing is, when the, when this bond offering closed, out of 197 units, 150 were already pre-leased to the university, to the hospital, to Erie Downtown Development Corporation, which itself is a not-for-profit. And it is a pivotable development in the, in the, in the new Erie, in the new revitalized downtown Erie program. I mean, it's a centerpiece of that. So in this particular bond offering, Community Finance Corporation is a not, is a not-for-profit. But we work with plenty of not-for-profits. In North Carolina, we, we work with a not-for-profit in Burlington, in Burlington, North Carolina. We work, not that they're not-for-profit, we work with a government agency, the Rhode Island Housing, and right up the road here, Warwick, Rhode Island. And so it's, it's fairly active in what we, in what we do.
Thank you for answering.
All right, I don't see any other hands. So we will take a vote. On 2024-820-499-GoldstarHighway. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, that passes nine to zero to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we are going to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn the special town council meeting?
Second. Motion by Gaiske, seconded by Russ. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? This is nine to zero to zero. We will reconvene the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole at 7:10. All right, up next on our agenda is 2024-917 Charles Barnum Roof Replacement Project. In our packet, this is on page 27. 27, we got there. All right. Counselor Russ, would you like to take this one?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 2024-917 Charles Barnum Roof Replacement Project. I make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the Groton Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Education and accept a grant for the proposed project to remove and replace the existing Charles Barnum Elementary School roof, and to establish the Permanent School Building Committee as the building committee for this project. So moved.
Second, Bordelone?
Moved by Russ, seconded by Bordelone.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to recuse myself due to the appearance of a potential conflict I have, even though I do not financially gain, I just feel more comfortable that I should sit out of this discussion, so I will recuse. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Beverly Washington, the Vice Chair of the Board of Education.
Sam Kilpatrick, Facilities Director for the District.
Okay. Did you want to give a little synopsis of what's going on with the roof, and the grant, and a little information?
Yeah, so the Charles Barnum roof has passed its life expectancy of 20 years, and the board has decided to replace it. So we went out to bid to get an architect to work on the project. Silver Petracelli is the architect that's working on the project. They finished up all the testing, et cetera, that they do on materials to determine whether there are materials that may be abated, et cetera. In addition to that, this has taken a little bit longer than we had hoped to, and I apologize for some of that. I probably should have been here last month, but I actually took a vacation, so. And the, so the project is now ready to go out to bid. And if there are any other questions about it, I'd be happy to answer. Oh, the other item, the, the, what, I think what may have, well, I do know what extended the timeframe on the planning of this, is that the person that we had working on this project was also looking at adding solar to this project, because the state now reimburses for solar on roof projects. And we went through the process, made sure that the architect was making sure that it would fit on the roof, that the weights would work, et cetera, all the engineering would work. But then we determined that actually we would have to own the solar project as the Board of Ed, and also maintain it, as opposed to the other projects that we've done in town. The projects at the Groton Middle School and Mystic River, we, we don't own. We do that through a PPA, a purchase power agreement. And so they are also responsible for the maintenance of those projects. And we didn't feel that we have the expertise to do the maintenance on these. We would have to go out and hire outside contractors to do the maintenance. So the expenses started to add up on the solar portion of it. And, and talking with the Board's Finance and Facilities Committee, we decided that we would delay the solar for a later time, if that's possible. We'll look at it again later, because it can be added, but we wanted to go ahead and move on with the roof itself.
Did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, Counselor Russ?
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, and congratulations on taking vacation, well-deserved. Couple questions. So in FYE 23, in that budget, $1 million was set aside for the roof replacement. Do you anticipate the roof costing more than that?
The estimate by Silver Petracelli is, I sent on to Mr. Burt.
Just a hair under $1 million.
Yeah, it's 990,000, 999,810 dollars is the estimate.
999,000, what was it?
810 dollars.
810, thank you.
I'm pretty sure that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
So just, if, just for knowledge, so the remaining money from that, if you get the 47%, will stay in the general fund?
Forty-seven and a half percent is reimbursable by the state.
It comes back to the Capital Projects Fund, not the general fund.
Okay. And just for clarification, I did get an answer on this, but I didn't understand that the Board of Ed was requesting a permanent school building committee to be appointed, and that the, the council needed to approve that. Can you just walk us through that?
Sure. And we still have a permanent school building committee in place for building the recent three schools. Under the Chapter 173 of the Public School Buildings Projects in the Connecticut General Statutes, CGS 10-283 actually requires, in order to apply for these DAS, Department of Administrative Services grants, it requires the town legislative body to formally authorize the Board of Ed to do so, and to set up a building committee. And we've done many of these projects over the years through this, way through the Town Council, and it's usually the school building committee, because there is one provision in law that you have to have someone with experience in the construction industry under CGS 10-292V. You have to have a member of the building committee has to have experience, which, kind of, what is it to who you're going to have do that? So in order to apply and get money, which will come to us, it's just the requirement.
Perfect. Thank you for the explanation. Those are my only questions. Thank you so much for applying for the grant.
Counselor Merritt?
Yes, I have a question from Mr. Kilpatrick. Is this roof leaking now?
There are, leaks do develop in the roof, and we repair them on a regular basis. Well, when they do appear. So we've had leaks in the roof, and as I said, it's beyond its 20-year life expectancy. So we are up there on occasion to make repairs in the roof.
Do you expect any repairs to what's underneath the roof?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Do you expect any repairs to what is underneath the roof because of the leakage?
There was, there was nothing indicated that, and then all the work that the architect did to, to, to take a look at this.
So he felt that it was okay to just replace the roof?
Yes, they, they looked at the weight loads and so on, because we were talking about snow loads with the solar on there and so on, so.
And the physical appearance on the inside of the building goes along with his determination?
There's no indication of anything that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Through the, through the mayor, you had mentioned on some of the other buildings, we have a company organization that handles solar power. Is that right? Can we use that same organization on this building?
It's the Green Bank that, that we worked with to get the solar on Groton Middle School and Mystic River. However, the Charles Barnum roof is in the Groton Utilities area, and that is why we would be required to actually own the panels.
And our other buildings are in the Eversource utility, which has
That's correct.
Has relationships or buyback, whatever they do with the power, where Groton Utilities doesn't have that.
That's correct.
So for us to participate, and so that we would have to own it and, and maintain it, where the other buildings, it's part of the Eversource system?
Yes.
Okay. How long are you anticipating that it's going to take to, to put the roof on?
We plan to start, I, it'll go out to bid, and I will ask the contractors to start the day after school is out and have it completed before school opens in late August.
So this is for next, this coming summer?
Yes, the, 25, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick question. I think this may be for Town Manager Burt. Just so I understand, this isn't an ask for funding. The funding, the $1 million has already been set aside in the project fund? So this is just a request to? Okay, okay, that is all. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Counselor Bordelone? Yeah, how old is the current roof now?
It's beyond the 20 years.
You don't, you don't know the exact age of the roof?
I don't recall exactly what year it was, but I know it's, it, when, when we first applied, it was beyond the 20 years. So that was two years ago. So now it's at least 22 years old.
All right, and so, like I said, this is just, you know, for the grant, and then the difference would stay, as you said, in the facilities?
It'll be returned to our Capital Projects Fund.
Right, which I'm sure there's plenty of other capital projects that need to be done with that, so, like HVAC system. So I guess through the mayor, through the town manager, since this money was already set aside for that, as a council, in it, depending what this grant comes in, is there a set number for the grant?
It's 47.5% of it, so 475,000.
I guess it would have to probably be another agenda referral, but I just think with the HVAC system going out to the schools, it looks like, you know, if we already
Yeah, it would have to be a whole new CIP project out of fund balance, once it's received. Yeah, you'd have to start from scratch.
Okay. But we would have this 47.5% positive that we weren't anticipating having?
Well, we were anticipating it, because that was the understanding when we Well, we were anticipating it because that was the understanding when we authorized the one million.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get to. Okay, so that was the understanding that that would be coming back. Okay. Yep, I'm all for building maintenance. You can't, you know, keep, you have to work on structures and it's a town, we have an obligation to make sure that our children have safe, healthy buildings to be in, and I'm a firm believer that not every building needs replacement. I think there's a lot of buildings that just need renovation and proper renovation in a timely manner. So I think this is very pertinent, appropriate, and, you know, I hope we continue to see more improvements and repairs throughout the district in some of our older buildings. And even some of our newer buildings are starting to need repair that we need to start looking at. So this, to me, is a no-brainer, but thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Councilor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through the mayor. This doesn't matter in the grand scheme of things, but what kind of a roof is it currently?
Well, to put it in plain terms, it'll be a rubber roof.
Rubber roof glued down on insulation or is it ballast?
It'll be, no, it will be glued down.
Okay, and it's going to be the same when you replace it as well?
Yeah, it's not a flat roof, though. They are, it's required to have a quarter inch pitch per foot, so.
Oh, yeah.
Once, once these roofs are done, if you went up on the roof, they kind of shaped like an accordion to get to the different drains. And I believe they have to add at least one more drain in this project, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any more hands. I'm glad it's an accordion roof because from what I've learned being on the council, we don't like the flat roofs. They cause more problems, so I'm glad it's an accordion. So with that, let's take a vote on 2024-917, Charles Barnum Roof Replacement Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention. Well, that passes nine to zero to zero. I mean, I'm sorry, excuse me, eight to zero to zero. All right, and let's hope we get that grant. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, up next is 2024-878-2, All-Terrain Vehicle Ordinance Motion to Reconsider. This is on page 29. Let me get to my page. And this has been put on the agenda because there was a request from a counselor to make a reconsideration of the ordinance. And that was you, Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to have a reconsideration on this, I guess, hearing, is that correct?
The motion?
Or the motion?
Read the motion.
Oh, right there. A move to reconsider the motion to set a public hearing on the ordinance regulating all-terrain and other road vehicles approved at the October 8, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting. So moved.
That was moved by Jones and seconded by Russ. And a reconsideration will take a majority of us to pass, for us to have a discussion on this again. So we will take Council Portland.
Can you just speak to the backstory of like where it was left and how we're here? Just so I think it's clear.
Right.
Just so if people, like, if you're just tuning in, you might not understand, like, where, how, why would it have to be, what happened to get to this point? So in the last meeting or the other meeting, we, like, if you could just speak, I don't want to speak because then it uses my time, so. If you could just introduce it of like what we're doing here.
Well, this was at a previous town meeting. This topic was brought up. It was passed, and it seems as though for reconsideration, Council Jones would like to change some of the items in here. And this past week or two weeks, within the last two weeks, Town Manager Burt had taken calls from counselors who were concerned about some of the items that were in the last ordinance. So he pulled together an updated ordinance and has also put in a different title and sent that out to the council. And it is now in this packet for us. If we choose to decide to go forward with the reconsideration, then we can open the topic back up for discussion, and it would still keep us on track for having a public hearing at our first town council in November.
All right, so a point of information. So at that meeting, there were some things that were discussed too as concerns with the write-up originally. So some, that's also part of this rewrite with the additional items that were addressed from that meeting?
Probably, yes.
Okay, because I wasn't privy to the phone calls per se, but I mean, I remember there were some items at that council meeting where people had concerns with like scooters that are, you know, you know, versus-
And mopeds.
Right, so that's encompassing all of that.
Yep, and some of those things were changed in here.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, I just want to make sure I'm clear.
And it also in the packet, before we get too far, I just want to notate that in the packet, it does have the ordinance that we passed. There is the changes that were made, and then there is a clean ordinance that was given to us, that was sent out, and it was left here at our table, a clean ordinance that was, so.
And Mayor, I just want to point out, the one on the table does have one small paragraph removed from page 40 of the larger pack where hundred dollar fine for service station owners. That, I meant to remove that in the earlier version.
Okay.
Probably give it just a little bit more info.
All right, I think if we get through the reconsideration to see if we want to reconsider, we can open it up for a full discussion.
Sure.
All right. Not seeing any hands, so let's take a vote on the reconsideration.
That's the Parker.
No, that's just a hand.
Oh, that's just a-
Um.
There you go.
We will take a vote to open up the All-Terrain Vehicle Ordinance and have a discussion on that for reconsideration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Out of the way.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Council Parker, I didn't hear your vote.
Aye.
Thank you. That's nine to zero to zero. So we now have it open. Council Jones, would you like to make the motion?
I will. Motion, motion to move to set a public hearing on the ordinance to enact additional penalties for participating in street takeovers in the December 3, 2024 Regular Town Council Meeting. So moved.
Second.
Jones, moved by Guyaski.
Can I speak for a moment?
You can speak on this.
So the reason for doing the reconciliation is to bring it, to be not too far away from the state's statute that we're, which is Section 714814379, and to make it not as overreaching, a little less overreaching than it was in the original form. And I think what Town Manager Burt has done has accomplished that.
Okay, are you all set?
All set.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, did you want to give a little synopsis on sort of highlighting some of the changes that were made from our previous discussion?
Sure, and kind of how we arrived at this is, if you recall, I was asked to look up some follow-up questions, including can we write it to include e-bikes was one of the things. Could we write it to allow further other yet-to-be-named items in the future? And as, as I got reviewing the actual state act, it's very specific on what you can put the fines towards. That act is all about creating those fines and having the ability to destroy or get rid of these confiscated vehicles quicker. So per the state act, it can only be all-terrain vehicle, motorcycle, I'm sorry. It can only be all-terrain vehicle, mini motorcycle, dirt bike, or motorcycle. Those are the four things that you can put in this, nothing else for the fees. That's all that's specifically authorized in the state act. And then once you start looking at it that way, it just, there was a lot of extra about what hours driving next to property, that, that type of thing, but, and so we changed, took out the go-karts, took out the go-karts, the mopeds, took out the dirt bike because that's not one of the authorized exact listings. We reduced the prohibited uses. For instance, for one thing, the A under prohibited use, they had go-karts, et cetera, so we had to dial that back. Operating, let's see, not operating on public, let's see, town or under public land where it would hinder parking or traffic.
And you're working off of pages like thirty-four?
I'm sorry, page thirty-five. I'm looking at thirty-five, what did we actually strike?
Right, thirty-four, thirty-five has changed. Okay, thank you.
No go-kart should operate as a nuisance. Those are already state law. There is really no purpose to have those. It's already state law, why be redundant? The whole point of the state act is solely to add those fees and to be able to destroy or sell the equipment if needed. So we just took out everything that's already state law, essentially. Let me see. And then there was that Section 6, operating hours, minors accompanied by guardians, guardians. That just gets way beyond what the state act intent was, and I don't think that was really the council's intent originally of the original referral or discussion. So we streamlined, they streamlined it with input from Chief Fisaro to be just what the state act is talking about. And I did put it back through the attorney to review again.
Okay. All right, does anybody want to have discussion on this? Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Burt, for dialing it back and keeping it at the state. I don't want us, I didn't want us to overreach. I am more comfortable with this ordinance than I was with previously, so thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilor Russ?
I just have a point of clarification. Town Manager Burt, you mentioned taking out the hundred dollar fine.
Yeah, there was under, if you look on page, well, it's still on the new version, as I mentioned, the one on your desk takes it off. If you look on page 40 of the most current version in the pack, if you look under the second to the last, second to the last paragraph, notwithstanding any gasoline or motor vehicle service station owner or operator operating in violation of Article 4G, this ordinance shall pay a fine of one hundred dollars for the first and each subsequent offense with self-serve. There's a very good chat, you wouldn't even know somebody, you know, you're busy with a customer, you might not even know somebody was pulling up anyway, so it just does not make sense to have that in there.
So it is still on the one?
Yeah, the one I handed out has crossed it, so it should be crossed out. The one I put on your desk, oh, it should be on, maybe I handed the wrong one.
Okay.
Cross that one out.
That's why I was confused.
That should be totally removed.
Okay, thank you. Is that the only difference?
Yes, that's the only difference.
Okay, thank you. That's, sorry, that was my confusion.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I should also mention, the first version that we looked at, doesn't it actually say street takeover, which it should, I mean, it falls under nuisance, et cetera, but honestly, street takeovers fall under nuisance. It's just about the fees and the confiscation. And I should mention, it was asked last time, before anything is disposed of, there's actually a hearing required, there's a process. It's not like it just automatically, you know, gets demolished or sold, et cetera. There's actually a full process of notifications, et cetera, through the state act, so.
Yeah, because I was kind of wondering about that because like, let's just say, you know, we all, like teenager takes it out unbeknownst to a family member, also they get a call and they say, hey, we got so-and-so here and he's out on his bike. You know, it's not the parent's fault necessarily at that time, right? Like, that kid, you know, like, how does that work? I mean, they, they're going to compensate it when it's, when the, when the underage person doesn't even own it?
Well, there's, in the, in the state act, there's some caveats, but the actual courts have to notify the owners of the vehicle. Because there could be, it could be stolen, it could be whatever else, though hopefully we'll get to that point with a stolen vehicle. But there's a whole process where you just have, you say why you think it shouldn't be destroyed or taken and, you know, through the courts. So it's a hearing like anything else.
Right, because I just think that from a parent's perspective, it's not the sixteen-year-old's money that's going out the window if it wasn't purchased by them, obviously.
But once it's-
And they're, and if they took it and were operating it in a way that wasn't designed for, you know, and a parent was to find out, you know, like, I was just curious, so that it's good to hear that there's a hearing.
Yeah, and, you know, because that's at the court's discretion. Once it's confiscated, the police, it's kind of out of their hands, so it's up to the courts at that point.
Interesting. All right, thank you.
Well, I will say that I, I very much like this version compared to the other version, and I thank you for putting the work in to do all the changes. I also, I thought some of it was a little, some of it was a little overreach on, you know, a lot of the personal property and things of that nature. I like that it is talking about, you know, how you can have steps to gain it back if you so choose to go that route. And also, but to being able to get it back, it also states that the owner has to have proof of registration subject to payment of any and all fines, towing and storage fees. So there is also some requirements if you are found guilty and you can still even possibly get it back. But, and this is more in line, I think, with the intent and purpose of when Counselor Giacom brought this forward and requested it about street takeovers when there was a death in our community due to that. So I think this falls right into place and in line with that. So I appreciate all the work that was put into it, and our council's now reconsidering it. All right, seeing no other hands, I will call for a vote on 2024-878-2, All-Terrain Vehicle Ordinance. All those, well, actually, it's not considered an all, it's considered a ordinance to enact additional penalties for participating in street takeovers and setting a public hearing for, it says December 3, Regular Town Council Meeting. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, that passes nine to zero to zero. Up next is a update for 2024-922, update on excess property redevelopment for Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley. This is in our packet on page 42. And just because there was so much on our agenda, this is going to be a presentation from you, and we are not going to do a question and answer period of this, after it is over. But rather, if you did have further questions, to send them to Mr. Burt, and those can be answered by Mr. Reiner or his department, and this is just an update.
Point of information?
Yes.
For me, I just wanted to ask, or a point of privilege, I just don't think it's very diplomatic. I can understand point in time, then maybe it should be scheduled different, but my concern is that the community doesn't see those emails, and I think that communication should be public, the questions that we ask, because we're elected to do a job, and it's not meant to be done behind the scenes, and I just, for me, feel we should be asking it in the forums. So if there's not a lot of time today, then there should be the presentation, and they should come back, and we should be able to ask those questions in real time, not an email, because as a counselor-
Your question?
So my question is, can we do that? I would like to make a motion for that because I just don't think it's appropriate to be answering-
Your question is, can we do it in public?
Correct, we should be. It should be the board always.
Thank you. Yes, if there's something here you don't understand this evening, you can send an email to get clarification. It is just an update, and we're not doing a Q and A at the end, is what I'm saying. And if there's something you don't understand at the end of this presentation, you are free to reach out and ask a question of Mr. Burt, is what I'm trying to say. I'm not saying, you know, you have a bunch of questions. I mean, there will be more, more time in the future to have a Q and A on this topic when it comes up at other times. This tonight is just an update.
I just-
Thank you. Can you introduce yourselves?
Sure. Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services.
Hello, Corinne Piazza, Economic and Community Development Manager for Town of Groton.
So tonight, we just wanted to give a very brief overview of kind of where we are on the two properties for Groton Heights and Pleasant Valley. And we actually plan on, like, we just wanted to kind of give a, for full transparency, just a quick overview and kind of let the public know and the council where we are. And next month, we plan on coming back again to go for a little bit of a deeper dive into things as well, so there'll be quite a few bites at this apple. But again, tonight, we just wanted to kind of give a quick update of where things were so that you and the public knew where things are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. All right, so for Groton Heights, we've issued the request for proposals. It posted on October 1, and it closes December 2. We promoted it with a de- We promoted it with a developer e-blast with the Urban Land Institute for some national access to the RFP. We updated the website and it's available on our town and state procurement sites. The site tours took place on October 16th and 17th. And for our next steps, the Property Sale Review Committee will be established and the schedule will be set for their initial review of the RFP responses once we have them. Next slide, please.
And just a reminder, the mayor appoints that committee.
Yes. And for Pleasant Valley, we allowed for about a month in between for posting this one after Groton Heights, just to allow for some administrative time with how many steps there are to process everything. We anticipate posting it November 5 and it will close on January 3. Same promotion with a developer e-blast through the Urban Land Institute, updating our website and having it available on the town and state procurement sites. And those site tours will take place on November 20 and 21. And then next for both RFPs, we'll return with an overview, as John mentioned, with an updated detailed schedule based on the new town policy and all the steps that that entails from start to finish for both properties. And that's it, thank you.
So, you know, basically, at this time, we got one of them out on the street, the other one's coming out soon. And we'll have more details as time goes on.
Okay, thank you so much for giving us a quick update. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
All right. Up next is 2024-921, the American Rescue Plan Act Funds Reallocation. This is in our packet on page 43. Would you like to give us a little update, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes. Again, so tonight, we wanted to come and talk to you a little bit about the potential approval of the returned ARPA funds and proposed allocations or obligations of that fund, of those funds, and the potential approval of any contingency allocation in anticipation of the, end of the year deadline that we have, because some deadlines are coming up with this. And then, you know, for next steps, once this is approved by the council, we go to the RTM. Next slide, please. Oh, yeah. One above. Thank you. And the next slide. All right, excellent, thanks. So just again, background, you know, the ARPA funds were really allocated by the council in multiple rounds between 2021 and 2024. Various projects around town, community partners, we included an attachment in the packet to kind of show where all of that allocation had gone to. And that total ARPA award was a little bit over 8.5, almost 8.6 million dollars. There is currently a surplus of $492,246. So you'll notice today, we sent out a revised memo on that, because when we were going through the numbers, double trip, triple checking, we realized that we had not accounted for the $169,000. That was set aside for the Groton Sale Foundation. So we took that out from the original number. So really, there's a surplus at this point in time of 492,246. So that's funding that either was projects not needing their full amount. Some of them, they returned $20 to us. Some of them, it was a little bit more, or others not taking places originally planned. I think, you know, there's a number of projects that fell into that category. Again, the ARPA funds have to be allocated or obligated by December 31, 2024. And we have to expend all those funds by December 31, 2026. And the council must reallocate the, we're also anticipating that not only, in addition to that $492,246, that some projects that are committed right now that are obligated and moving forward, might not need all of their funding. So the other kind of framework of how we're looking to do this is moving forward with this, if you made two motions, one, you dictate where you want to put that $492,000. But then if there's additional returned ARPA funds, if we obligate them now, we don't know what that funding amount is going to be, but you need to do it to a specific project. And we can kind of do like a catch-all motion with that. We ran this through the town attorney, so that, again, we're obligating those funds now if any of them actually come back and you can obligate it to a specific project. So, you know, with that in mind, we did have a couple of suggestions based upon, you know, previously allocated projects that really fell within the consistency of what ARPA funding could be used for. Next slide, John.
Great. So as John mentioned, we proposed some allocations that fall within those ARPA parameters and that have been previously funded and we know have additional need. There's three of them. The first one is Sutton Park Revitalization. For the funds that we have available, we put 242,246 to this project. It received 980,000 in spring 2022. It was for significant upgrades to the park and additional funds are needed for project completion. Next slide, please. The second one is the Town of Groton Housing Assistance Program and 200,000 going to that program. This received 175,000 in spring 2023. And it's a revolving loan fund that offers up to 35,000 in loans to qualifying homeowners for eligible housing repairs and up to 10,000 for first-time homebuyer assistance. The initial funds for this project were spent before we even promoted it and there's currently a waiting list. The third is for Human Services Assistance Programs at 50,000. This receives 350,000 total over three different allocations since 2021. And additional funding will support Crucial Resident Support Programs. Next slide, please. And as John mentioned, the second item is essentially a contingency allocation. Because we're up against that deadline coming pretty quickly, we want to make sure we're not leaving any funds on the table due to administrative steps not being complete. So essentially, it would just be if any additional funds come back that we aren't anticipating, for example, a project doesn't use its contingency or comes in under budget, that that remaining amount goes to the Groton Housing Assistance Program, so that we catch that by the end of the year. We don't leave any money on the table. And this program is ongoing and has ongoing need. It's not a project that has an end date or will finish construction and not need the funds, so we know we'll be able to utilize it.
And again, you know, all the funding has to be spent by December 31, 26.
And next slide, please. So we're just back to the requested town council action, which is considering the potential approval of the returned ARPA fund allocations, as noted, and potential approval of the contingency allocation. And that's it for our presentation.
And just to make it clear, without that contingency portion, we'd lose the money. So it has to be done and allocated before the end of the year.
Okay, and everybody did receive the updated version at your desk, is that correct? So it has the whole list of all of the ARPA, where we got the money back from, and the updated numbers that were discussed here tonight, due to the USS sale change.
And again, focus tonight is where do we want to direct that $492,000? And if there's any of that contingency funding that comes back?
Well, I will say that what was presented in this little packet, items 1, 2, and 3, have all been priorities of this council. So I don't know if it just worked out that way. But these are things that our council has always spoken in favor of and that we consider them goals and things that are important to us, which is housing, Sutton Park Revitalization, as well as helping taking care of people in our community through Human Services and or of other, other needs. So I would be in favor of how this is spelled out in the updated version and would have no problem allocating them the way you had suggested this evening. So thank you so much for pulling this together for us.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Reiner. And I'm not, I don't-
Corinne. Corinne.
Corinne, okay, thank you, Corinne. So I would also echo, as the, as Mayor Franco said, the allocation of how you have split it out. So that's all fine with me. My question is, are you anticipating, because of the contingency things, are you anticipating it coming out of these three things? Or there are some other programs that may still be sort of releasing some money? Where do you think, where's that contingency coming from?
So there's still a number of programs that we've obligated funds to, but they haven't spent the money for the projects. Some of them, they haven't fully bid them out yet, but they're, it's obligated funding per the council, per the federal requirements, but the projects haven't really kicked off too far yet. And as Corinne had stated, if any of those projects come in under budget, or they don't utilize the contingency that's in their budget, that's going to be excess funds. So it's not something that would be coming out of those three necessarily. It's money that would be coming from other projects that we don't know exactly where their budget's going to fall right now.
Sort of like where this money came from? This came from other projects that didn't complete or didn't, didn't do something and extra money and it came back?
Exactly.
So do you have a kind of a sense of how much money that is?
It could be $20. It could be $50,000. You know, it's hard to really guess at this point, because, you know, I think when a lot of those projects were put together, if they haven't started, some of the budgets might actually be a little bit under, but you don't really know until you start some of these projects.
And when do they need to, is it they just, by 2026, they have to have spent it? But is there some other deadline before that, that they have to sort of say, we're ready to go and they go and do it?
So the obligated deadline is December 31, 2024. So that's the council obligating it. And then essentially, a memorandum of understanding between the town manager and the entity, even if that entity is another town department, as long as something is signed between the manager and that third party, whether it's, you know, one of our project partners around town or another department. If that's signed prior to December 31, 2024, the money is obligated. They then have two more years to spend it.
But I would imagine for those that are out there now, at a certain point, you'll start really putting pressure, put the thumb on them, either, either move forward or release the dollars.
Yeah, I mean, even in the past few months, there have been some of our project partners that we've really had to push to make sure we even got that initial agreement set. There were some that weren't really sure where it was going to fall. And we got, you know, those all straightened out.
And we, just, I guess, through the mayor, through the town manager, we don't, or maybe Mr. Reiner, we don't release any money to any of these organizations until they have sort of made that obligation. So we hold on to the money. It's not sitting in someone else's account. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that for all of these, let me double check on that. I don't want to misspeak on that. I believe it's a reimbursement, but let me double check.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we have control over that money, so it's not, it's being held responsibly. But other than that, I think the way you have allocated it, we've had a big, we've had a very, very strong commitment to our Sutton Park. And, you know, bringing that to, to conversion, getting as many parts of it as we can, I think has been part of the council, certainly been a wish of mine. And I think the other two programs are, are fine. So I'm comfortable with where you, how you have done it. And I think the contingency idea is good. You don't have to keep coming back and it'll just sort of take care of itself. So, all right, thank you.
Counselor Boardman?
I guess I'm going to be different as always, I guess. I'm a firm advocate for funding our most vulnerable in our community. And we're looking at ARPA funding overwhelmingly. The reason we have this is to help the families that were suffering and still some that are suffering from social inequalities like food insecurity, housing insecurity, loss of wages during this time, homes, jobs, and things like that. And overwhelmingly, the loss in the minority community, as well as our community at large. To me, I think these numbers are, I can respect what's here, but I think the numbers are top-heavy at the top and not enough at the bottom. When looking at this, the amount of money, how much ARPA dollars have we received total through the mayor, to the town manager, or to anybody that's able to answer it?
You just mentioned it, how much?
Total ARPA dollars the town received.
I don't know, it's close to 7.9, it's eight point-
It's 8.587, 894 and 4 cents.
State, one more time, I'm sorry?
8,587, 894 and 4 cents.
So I'll just round it down and call it 8 million, for me, for my brain. 8 million dollars has come in and we, as a council, you know, allocated some of this money. When we look at our own town in the Human Service Department, we totaling only 350,000 dollars to me, and I'm just speaking as a sole person up here, because this is what I believe. Many times, I've asked to move it, it was nope, let's wait, let's see. I don't think this little 50,000 additional is fair, or just, or equitable. I'm all for Sutton Park, but I'll tell you right now, Sutton Park's not going to feed and clothe our community. It's a great place to go and I think there's other money out there that could fund that, like maybe that return, I don't know if that return money, if we get the 47.5% from the infrastructure, I don't know if that's able to be used for parks, if we get the funding for the school. But either way, I think we can find it somewhere else. I think we have an obligation as this town to make sure we're showing that that money's going to our direct-hit community. I love the Town Housing Assistant Program. So I feel, and I've asked, I guess, to the town manager, how much money currently of the money of the 350 allocated is left in Human Services currently today?
There was a, there actually, for the ARPA dollars, it's just about out. And we were intending to transition more to that new fund. And just to make it clear, whatever money we're putting in now, it won't be, I'm not going to bind it to people affected by ARPA. It'll be more for general use, because those are really dwindling on who is affected by ARPA, or, sorry, COVID at this point.
Correct. And I think other people now are being affected that weren't initially affected. And so that's great that you're going to do that. So for me, we're coming into our winter season, holiday season. I feel like my heart hurts seeing 242,000 dollars up at Sutton Park and 50 in a basically vacated fund down there. So I'd like to make a motion that I think we should be, however these numbers are going to be, I think 142,246 to Sutton Park, the 200 can stay to the housing, and I think 100,000, and I honestly think more, but I'm not sure I'll get the support, should go to Human Services. That's where my heart is and I stand by that. And honestly, I think more should go. I'm sorry, town manager, do you have-
Did you mean 150,000?
I'm sorry, yes, 150,000, sorry, I apologize.
Can you repeat the numbers one more time?
Yep, so basically, all I'm doing is removing 100,000 from the top line, which would be Sutton Park and putting it into Human Services. Everything else would stay the same. I think that's fair. That sends a stronger message than 50,000, as we slowly been allocating it, in my opinion. And honestly, I think, I would love to see if someone would, I challenge this council to propose another motion even higher than that, actually. Because we're at the end of the ARPA dollars and now is the time to help our community. So I want to put that motion on the floor.
McBride will second that.
Again, my reasons are, our community is hurting, we're going into winter, holiday season, and we have an obligation and we have, we're saying excess revenues. And that's, that's a good thing to have. That money should go to those people. The food and shelter should be top of the line. And honestly, the contingency, where do we say all that's going to go at the end? Where are we allocating it?
Oh, to the housing program.
Yeah, I think it should be split. So I'd like to also think that we should split that 50/50 to both programs. So whatever comes in, 50% to the housing, 50% to Human Services. I don't know if I can get a second to that as well.
Sorry, only one motion on the floor.
Yeah, I didn't hear a second to that either.
I can, I can have an amendment later, but my thing would be that that would be how it should be split. And I have a point of information.
Your point of information?
The housing assistant, is that income-driven and what is that cap for income?
It's 100% AMI in, for the, for the ARPA dollar program.
Okay, thank you.
Can you repeat that?
We didn't hear you. Can you repeat that?
Yeah. 100% AMI for the ARPA, for the Town of Groton Housing Assistance Program. So that's the, basically how it's decided upon for the applicants.
So 100% of the immediate income?
Counselor Russ, did you have questions? Where's your hand up?
What is the, yes, thank you. Through the mayor, what is AMI in Groton?
Give me a minute and I'll find that for you.
Okay. And then just kind of a follow-up on that, Human Service Assistance Program, through the mayor to the town manager. Can you define everything that comes out of that program and who qualifies for that program, please?
Well, I don't have that information. I mean, I don't have my laptop tonight, work today. But, you know, the earlier, we tied the earlier dollars. Now, we have, of course, that newer Human Service Fund. And just as a reminder, we talked about maybe taking some contingency dollars out of the main town budget later to shore, to add more into that. But I'd have to look at what, you know, was our, it was COVID-related impact with the earlier ARPA dollars, but I'd have to look at, I'd have to, I'd have to get back to on what their actual income level was.
Okay, I'm going to throw this out there. I, I have a hard time, if it is only reaching a small percentage of our population, we, I've been preaching about Alice since the budget season. The Alice population is a large chunk of our population. The Alice population is a large chunk of our population. I realize 50,000 isn't a lot, 150,000 isn't a lot. But we, we do need to start reaching people outside of just those on the very lowest income in our society, in our community. So without knowing that, I have a hard time making a decision on that. I would like to know exactly what the human services assistance program goes to and who can benefit from it.
And, and just to make, be clear again, you were talking about the earlier ARPA dollars, you're talking about the new fund.
I'm talking about this funding.
This funding is really ARPA funding. It's not that new fund. This is ARPA fund. So this would be held separately. It can be set to wherever you want. If you want to, you know, whatever parameter you want to set, that's what we'll use. But just to make sure the money doesn't go too fast, I'll probably be a second approver on it. Just, you know, because that money's going to go fast. So, you know, you want to try to get to as much of the lower income as you can.
Well, I guess my question is if we have the-
It can go to anything though.
I'm sorry, if we have the housing assistance program, does this go to housing? Does this go to food? Does this go to rent? Does this go to, like what, what exactly does?
This one is wide open. This one can be used for wherever you want. Usually it's for rent, it's for mortgage, it's for utilities, whatever ARPA, whatever COVID impact you had. But I was intending this amount to be, now that we're moving kind of past the COVID impact, I would rather this be available for whatever, anything. Whatever need is out there. And that newer fund we have that's not ARPA dollars is also, you know, whatever is needed. It's kind of, there's a food bank portion of it, but there's a wide open portion that we funded 20,000 to.
Okay, thank you.
So, sorry, very quickly, Erie Medium Income in Grotton is about $74,000 per household. But that number slides in scale based upon a one-person household, two, three, four. So that's your kind of range is somewhere right around there.
Thank you.
Councilor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I don't know who can answer this question. But I believe, Tom Manager, Bert, you mentioned that in the human services program, that they're almost out of the ARPA dollars.
The ARPA dollars are down to less than $1,000. And I think it was down to a couple hundred dollars as of a week or two ago. And then, so now they've started going into that new fund. I think that's at 14,000 out of the original 20 right now.
Okay. And the housing program has zero funds for ARPA?
So we, we have a waitlist on the amount of funds. So the original 175,000 allocated, that's already been kind of spoken for.
So that's the program that if we dump this in, we have a better chance of it getting used before the end of '26?
Yes. We, we have a waitlist, I think, is it of 16 properties at this point in time that are looking for that housing assistance, yeah.
So if we put another 50,000 into the human services, how long will that last?
Well, you can never, you can never guess that. I'm trying to think when we first, what was our first, do you remember the dates on our first allocations?
Around '21.
Yeah. So it took, you know, about three years to use up that.
350,000.
And, and of course, earlier on, you're using, as the impact was greater, you were using greater dollars and it's been tapering down somewhat. So.
Okay.
No, there's always needs. I don't want to say, you know, I'm just saying for ARPA really, that's why I want this to be more wide open, not just COVID related. Any of these three categories, I have no doubt we could easily spend by 26, end of '26.
My, my concern is at the end of, toward the end of '26, October timeframe, maybe, one entity says, yeah, I can't use this 50 grand. I can't use this 75 grand. And it comes back. Can we get that spent in three months, two and a half months?
I think you'd be hard pressed on the housing program that quickly to get, because it has to be spent. All the work has to be done.
Yeah. I mean, at some point-
Depending on the amount, you could probably do some through the, through the human services. Parks and Rec, I can usually get, you can usually do that within a month or two. You know, you can buy equipment, you know, pretty much any point.
So if it's, if it's a payback program, like I think that you, what you were saying, Mr. Burke?
For the housing?
For all the ARPA. It's a reimbursement.
Reimbursement, yeah.
So at some point, we can just say, this is your cutoff now or never. Is there a date that would be good to tell these? Because I know you're trying to put the thumb screws to them to get them to do their work, get the work done. But if they don't have it done by June of '26, say, listen, we're going to take it back.
I mean, I, I think we could certainly look at that. And, you know, once the council kind of re-obligates this funding, we do plan on sending some information out to all of our project partners just to remind them, all right, here are the deadlines. And we could even say, listen, we're, we don't want to get stuck holding a bag full of money that we have to then give back to the feds. We could put a date of, you know, you need to spend by June 1st to July 1st, '26. Because then, yeah, for a housing rehab program, we could spend that money. For human services, we could spend some of it. But again, I, I don't know how much we could spend of that in a short period of time as well. The, the housing rehab, there's always abilities to do like change orders on additional projects if things come along. So that is one that, I mean, if we got a substantial sum back, I think we'd have trouble spending that on almost any project. You know, if a million dollar project didn't happen, but I don't see that happening here.
Gotcha. All right. So that, that, the housing project program is probably the best place to put it to, to get it spent fast. And there'll always be money for the human services. We'll always be able to get them some money from somewhere. We're just not the ARPA money.
If the council wants it, then we can, yes.
What's that again?
If the council, yeah, if the council wants it, there's contingency dollars. You could build it more. My, you know, my anticipation is this is a test year in that new fund and we'll see what the real use is. We anticipate we might have to take money out of contingency. And then we'll try to right-size it, you know, the next year.
Okay. So human services, human services, we're not going to allow them to go belly up if they don't get this ARPA money. Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the numbers, the way they've been presented to us. And that's the way I'll vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just the way I'm understanding what you're saying is we basically want this money to run out so that we make it, we actually spend all of it, we get it clean and we're done with it. It's not like we're continually funding these things. We'll come, we'll fund them in other ways. The, the needs will be met. But we're basically putting budgets here that we, that we sort of have some confidence that we can close out this money and, and have spent all of the money in the town. It may, you know, ideally, we may want to put, you know, lots more money into human services from the contingency fund or other places. But reality, we're just trying to make sure that we spend all the money that we were allocated. And these, you're kind of comfortable with these numbers that we can actually spend all this money. It isn't closing out these programs or underfunding them. We're just trying to spend the money that, the 8.5 million that we got and just make sure we keep it all in Grotton.
Correct. We're trying to make sure we spend every penny of that 8.5 plus million dollars so we don't leave any of that on the table. And if there are council actions on any of these types of initiatives or others, those are a discussion for later. But, you know, right now, we're just focusing on the ARPA dollars and what we think we can spend within the next two years and, you know, a month or two months, you know, by the time this all gets reallocated.
So putting too much money in any one of these programs is the risk that we won't, we'll actually have to give the money back to the federal government because we just really can't spend it that quick.
Potentially.
The better thing is make these numbers like you have them, keep them kind of low, spend the money, close the accounts, keep everything inside of Grotton. And that's the, and then later, we'll find other ways to, to raise funds for these programs. But it's not through this.
That was our intent.
That's your intent. Okay. All right. Yeah, I'm very comfortable with the original numbers that you have. Now, let me understand that we're just trying to make sure we spend all the money we were given and then we're, we've completely closed it and we're done with it. It's not, for lack of wanting to fund these programs, it's for trying to make sure we spend all the money that we're allocated in a logical way. So, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Bordelain?
Again, I, for me, I feel some stuff for my opinion is misrevered than it's saying it could be spent better in the housing and not the food. We talked in 2026 and we already blew through the 50. Don't forget also that our town human services caps people, that they only can get so much. So if we increase that number, we could, to the, to the mayor, to the town manager, we could offer more to people than what we're doing. Also, I stand with, because right now, our office says you only can get up to, what's the number, I think, per, every year or something? They cap them. There's a, there's a number that, if they're in need.
Yeah, though I can override, I often override.
But I'm just saying there is a number to kind of-
There's a ballpark there, yeah.
And I agree, I do agree with Councilor Russ with the Alice program. I'm very familiar with that. I think if we increase that number and we open up to a broader income base, which we could do, that money is going to go. Because you're going to start seeing people in a little bit of a higher threshold who are struggling right at the line where they don't qualify for free lunch, they don't qualify for food stamps, they don't qualify for this. And they're just getting by that they don't qualify for anything. That is the group of people who struggle the most. That money, and I don't know how anybody up here can say that we couldn't use that money for them. And yet we are willing to take the money out of contingency and just fund it and fund it later. Every one of these accounts could be funded by contingency later through the mayor to the town manager, correct?
Certainly.
Yeah, right. So I, that excuse, that, 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 that representation to me applies for all of them. I feel the ARPA money should be used in a way that it was presented and not take it out of our tax burden currently if we don't have to apply that money. And then we can use the contingency later if we choose. Any of these could have that. For human services, there's tons of stocking they can do towards the end, clothing, sweater drives. I mean, you've got to think outside the box here. Gift certificates for Christmas for kids, for presents. And opening up that income base would allow that money to move and allowing people a higher threshold. And then if these aren't met, then it could fall back into the Sutton Park just as easy. Do you get what I'm saying? So it's not a loss here. But I, for me, it sends a message to me and my community when I'm allocating those funds and saying, I, Councilor Bordelain, I speak for myself, feel that this money should be here and let's see where the cookies crumble. And if it doesn't crumble in favor through the mayor, through the town manager, that money could just roll to Sutton Park, couldn't it, at the end? It wouldn't be wasted.
Given enough time, yes.
Right, right. It would be, rightly, it would be known enough time. So I just, to say, oh, we'll just throw 50 from contingency later. Again, we do need to open up and stop thinking of just the very low income. Think about the people who are barely getting by. And if we open that up and change that, that money will be spent, I guarantee it. And there's a way to put it back into Sutton Park. But I think all of these are important, but I do think, I just don't feel comfortable with just 50,000. And I, I won't be able to support that. So I just hope that we could do something a little bit better. And if it's not spent, you can just move it just as easily at the very end. But let's put it out there and let's give human service the option to spend it wisely, accordingly, for our community. Thank you.
Councilor McBride?
Thank you. Through the mayor, just some questions. On page 52, where we're going to talk about Sutton Park later this evening, it talks about the 2.5 million that we've invested in Sutton Park over the last couple of years. My question is really specific to you, we have the detail here of where we're looking to potentially spend money later, fitness stations, rail stations, basketball courts, so forth, so forth. In that detail, it doesn't list the items here that we're looking to spend this 242 on bathrooms, multi-use trail, or additional parking. So are these additional projects that were not in the initial proposals?
Sorry, that's, oh.
Oh, sorry. It, it would go towards the, unless you thought, otherwise it would go towards the playground and Sutton Park because that's the priority. It would go through, it would only go towards existing that 1.7, 1.8 million outstanding. It would offset that sum.
And this was just saying what the fund had been used for?
Right.
Not what additional funds were going to be, that the 980 was used for some of these things.
Right.
So if we earmark, whether it's, I don't know, 142 or 242, that will go towards, what I'm just trying to understand, so when we talk later, that will go towards which of the allocations on page 52?
Well, there's, all the allocation is already allocated. Right now, you have, you need another 1 point, is it 1.8 million? 1.7, 1.8 million for Sutton Park? It would just offset that. You have a gap, you have a funding gap of 1.7, 1.8 million. The other things are all accounted for. You're just now trying to do the playground, the basketball court, and a few other items.
Okay, thank you. I was confused. I thought you were looking for additional work. Okay, one other point of clarification. The concern over spending the 50 or the 150, whatever the number is, seems a little, I don't know, it seems from my view, not, not correct because you've spent 350 the last couple of years, right, in the housing assistance program? We spent 150 in fall '21, 150 in spring '23, 50 in spring, total 350. So to allocate another 100 to 150 would be, in my opinion, I mean, I guess a last year professional opinion. Do you have any concern at all that if we put 150 in this program, that it wouldn't be spent by 12, 31, or '26?
From the human services department?
From, if, if this passed, the additional one, it seems like there's concerns that we may not spend 150. And that's why we're at 50. My question is, do you have any concern over if this passed and the council aborted 150,000 in the human services assistance programs, would there be any risk at all of that not being spent by 12, 31, '26?
I would answer, no, there wouldn't be a risk of that. I would make sure it was spent.
Yours, okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to kind of piggyback off what my colleague, Councilor McBride, said. So you, so if we allocated 150,000 to human services, it would be spent, like that, okay. And, but I'm kind of looking at it right now is in fall of '21, we allocated 150,000. And then we didn't allocate anything until spring of 2023. And that was another 150,000. So that's a year and a half to spend 150,000. And then we put in another 50,000 a year later. So I'm just, I'm kind of, I'm looking at that 150, if we got two years of this left, I'm kind of looking at that 150,000 at year mark. And we've already allocated 50,000 this year. So I would more or less like to go in the 100,000 mark if we would do 50,000. Then circle back to, what hap, is it, I, I know we have until January, December 31st, 2024, through the mayor to Director Reiner to allocate that money. What happens if we get money from a different project that comes back? How do we reallocate it or it just has to be spent?
That's the contingency portion of the, what he said.
Okay. And the contingency portion just-
Right now, it says the housing, the housing program.
Okay. So if, if it comes back after January, December 31st, 2024, it goes into the housing program? Got it. I'm kind of torn. I don't want, I don't want to spend, Manager Burke? Let me put it this way. In your experience, has anybody really ever been denied any human services assistant?
I'm not there daily, but I'm sure there has been. And just to give a little background on, on these ARPA dollars, you know, it was kind of early on, people still had a lot of those extra dollars from the government. So the first 150,000 got spent right in the tail end before the next 150 got spent. So they're kind of backpacked together and now it's tapered off. But there's always ongoing other needs. And we've already spent the, the last bit of money.
And through the mayor, have you spoken with Director Fondulis about her potential needs? And would she need any additional funding greater than what was proposed tonight in the winter months, coming with like heating assistance and food needs and insecurity during the cold months? Is there, are, are we potentially looking at a massive need that we need to allocate even more?
Well, TBCCA tends to be the front line for a lot, well, we have the, Grotton Utilities has some matching dollars. So there's some funds there, but TBCCA also does utility help. There's a certain amount they can do. That's usually the first line of where people go through for the utility help. I mean, again, you know, right now, we have some more strict parameters. You know, if we open it wide up, I could spend a million dollars in a, you know, in a month. It all depends on how strict we want it to be. I don't think we're going to spend 50,000 in the next couple, I think there's plenty of time to do 50 now and do more through contingency. It's just wherever the council wants. I mean, contingency of, the general fund contingency, not the, not the ARPA contingency they're talking about.
And through the mayor, from my knowledge, what, what are the current parameters of the human services assistance fund?
Again, I don't have my laptop, so I can't check that.
Right. My apologies. That was already asked.
But it's, you know, it's on the lower income scale. And it's COVID related. I'm not proposing to use it towards COVID. You know, that's kind of pretty much petered out at this point. It'd be, it won't be for people, just people who were impacted by COVID. It'll be for anybody in terms of, it doesn't have to be COVID. It'd be whatever is needed elsewise.
I'm going to yell back, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. So let me just put in my two cents here. I think it would be wise that when we're coming down to the very, like, end where we're there like, let's allocate this money, we had a few months left, figure out where it's going to be spent. I think Sutton Park, just put a good chunk of money towards that. I think the Housing Assistance Program, obviously, you have a waitlist. So this has been very successful. So I'm very happy about that, that, you know, even I was worried if we put some money into that account, like, how, how well would be received? And you're saying it went so well that you ran out of money before you even advertised it. So I guess that's, that's really good, that people are taking advantage of this. When it comes to Human Services, I am good with putting 50,000 in there, as it was just stated. We put 150,000 into another account, correct, Mr. Burt? Is that correct? There's 150,000 in another account, is that correct?
Not for, not for Human Services.
What is the additional account that, the budget time that we put into another account?
The council only put in 30,000 of that.
30,000?
10,000 towards food and 20,000 in general, and I think there's 14,000 left of that.
Okay, so.
Again, though, we talked expressly about that, that we knew we'd most likely do contingency once we got a feel for how much more was needed.
Right. And there's already money, is there money in their budget to get these type of things, period? Like, how do they run a Human Services without having some kind of funds to get this? Do they get money from the state? Do they get money from the federal assistance? I mean, how are they running Human Services and helping the people in our community without the ARPA money or without any of this additional money?
Well, we have the Flora Perkins Fund that's just about used up. We have, like I said, the Groton Utilities match. There's not a ton of funds put into that department for these type of programs. It's usually connecting people, there's a lot of other programs out there like TBCCA. It's more connecting them up to, you know, knowing where those funds are.
And has the director come to you in previous years and said, hey, I need more money?
She, words are, I can always use more money.
Understood, but has she come to you and asked and said, I've run out of this, I need help? Has she ever done that? Because there are donations from the community, that's what we read in our, when we read our town council packet and we see all those donations, I mean, there's a lot of donations going there, like, some of them are very substantial, correct?
Yes.
But she hasn't come to you and said, I've run out of money? And if she did, you would definitely come to the council and say, Human Services is requesting more money for whatever, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I would be in favor of having exactly what was written in our packet, and we will be having a discussion a little bit later this evening about fund balance. Because there's money there that could be put aside into an account for these type of things in the event that things run out. So I would, and which I would feel more comfortable using that kind of money and setting it aside, just in the event that we don't need it, we can allocate it somewhere else and not have deadlines on top of it all. So if you're dealing with deadlines, I'd say, me, get it out, have it spent so honestly, I don't want to send anything back to the federal government while, you know, I appreciate that they gave it to us and I'd like to invest it in our community. Any other comments? You did too. Councilor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, with the, some of the American Rescue Plan dollars, you know, it was meant to help people, but it was also meant to be spent to put money back into the economy and create jobs. And, you know, I think Sutton Park, doing that, using ARPA money for that is a vital source of it. And just, the strings attached to it is just making me incredibly uncomfortable going to the $150,000 mark. But later in the meeting, when we, as the mayor mentioned, we're going to talk about general fund discussion, and I'm happy to have a further discussion about using some general fund money to put in that account that we made as council in this past budget cycle. So I'm going to be in favor of the, as suggested by Director Reiner and Manager Burt and the entire town of Groton staff, and then look at the general fund money later, later on in discussion in the meeting.
Thank you. So I'd like to make an amended motion to the numbers that you see in our packet for Sutton Park, 242,246. The Housing Assistance Program, 200,000, and the Human Services Assistance is 50,000. Within any anticipated, trying to find the right wording. Yeah, any, with any additional funding would automatically be allocated to the Town of Groton Housing Assistance Program, as written at the bottom of our packet.
Second.
Point of information.
Yeah. The main motion was what Councilor Bordalyn put on. You put a main motion on the floor and I just amended it. Who was my second, I'm sorry?
I was.
There was no motion made in advance of this agenda item, so nobody read it in the beginning. Councilor Bordalyn had made a motion, and that was the main motion, and I changed the numbers and made an amendment.
Point of information.
Your point of information, your question?
Is the contingency part that's in the existing was to the Housing Rehabilitation and Homeowners Assistance Program? Are you changing that to the human, where did you say?
I said to Housing Assistance Program, as written.
Okay, so it's existing as it was written?
Yes.
Okay.
Point of information?
Your question?
I just want to follow the procedure, I just want to make sure, if you could just go back and explain, so to my understanding, I made a motion to move the numbers, it was seconded, that was on the table.
That's the main motion, yes.
So we have, so now we have two motions on the table?
I put an amended motion on.
So there's two now?
I amended your, your numbers, yes.
So my motion's on the floor as well as yours?
Right. You can have one main motion with two amendments to it. Do we have any questions?
I request a roll call vote.
I have a request for a roll call vote. All right, hold on one second, please. All right, so as it is, we will vote on the amended motion first. And the amended motion is the numbers that are written in our packet.
Point of clarification on the revised package, right? The revised package you provided to us, that's your motion?
Yeah, on the one that was given to us.
Just want to make sure.
That was left on our table with the 242,000 for Sutton Park. I'm just going to read the top numbers.
I just wanted to make sure.
200 and then 50.
It wasn't what people saw.
Yep. All right, so I'm going to go, Councilor Bordalyn.
Not, if for that motion, no.
I'm Franco, I'm yes. Councilor Gajewski?
Yep.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor McBride?
No.
Councilor Merritt?
Yes.
Councilor Parker?
Yes.
Councilor Pacino?
Yes.
Councilor Rusk?
No.
That passes six to three to zero. All right, let's take a recess. It's 8:30. Let's take a 10-minute recess before we come back and we deal with.
Blight.
Blight. It is 8:31.
Okay, it is 8:46 and we are back from recess. Who's last? I think I -- Counselor Pacino, would you like to take that one?
I would, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Item 2024-332, Blight Ordinance Revisions. Motion to recommend a resolution adopting the revisions of the Blight Ordinance, Number 281, as presented on October 1st, 2024.
Second, Board Line.
Who, Judge Pacino, seconded by Board Line. Hello, would you like to give us a synopsis on the revisions?
Sure, again, John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development. So, we started talking with these, the council, back in the winter, early winter, February of '24. We had made some amendments, then we'd had those crafted, I think we even held a public hearing. And then the state made some additional changes to the ordinance, or to the state enabling legislation, the state law, on blight. We then came back to the council, made some additional minor modifications, discussed that at length, and then had a public hearing back in October. Basically, you know, this gives us some additional tools when we utilize blight, but the most important tool that we use with blight is communication, and just talking with people and working with homeowners. We don't like to use a hammer, we like to use gentle words and try to work to get properties cleaned up. We've been doing that, there's one right over by the town hall now. We're just working with some property owners, getting a dumpster out there and working with them. But it's always good to have the leverage there if need be. In the referral, it kind of talks about some of the changes, again, reducing the town population minimum for some of the things that we can do, allowing reduced assessment of property, and for blight purposes, allowing the municipality to take more immediate action, where there's three or more violations during the 12-month period, and then looking at the fines for $150 a day, or $250 a day on vacant property, and then having kind of a bit of a sliding scale on fines when it comes to commercial properties.
Thank you. Do you have any comments, Counsel Board Line?
Thank you. So, if a homeowner or business had a couple violations as of today, let's say they were on violation number one or two, would this start today, or how would that work with people already on violations? How would, like, if I was the homeowner who had violations, let's just say, and this went into effect on X date, how does that affect the person that's currently under? Or would they, would this be moving forward so they would fall under the old one, and this would move, starting any new violations effective when this starts?
It would be moving forward.
Okay, so anyone currently under, would this would start fresh on new properties?
That's how we would review it and enforce it, and I actually can't think of any cases where we don't have compliance.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I can't think of any cases where we don't have compliance with people working with us.
That's my other question.
Yeah. I've been here 10 years, the Blight Ordinance was adopted right before I started. We always work with people.
All right, any more? Okay, I'll just refresh everybody's memory a little bit. I remember October 1st, I don't think anybody signed up to speak against this, or even in favor of it. Although I do remember somebody getting up during Citizens' comments saying they were in favor of it, as a side note, so. Seeing no hands, we'll take a vote on revising the Blight Ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Counselor Parker, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. Nine to zero to zero.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, have a good night. Up next is 2024-876-1, General Fund Fund Balance Review. This is on page 48 in our packet. And we were also given, at our seat, a list of capital projects for the last two budgets, if anybody would like to refer to any of those. Mr. Burt, do you want to give us an overview? I mean, we had discussions at one of our previous council meetings at the COW to discuss how we are not overtaxing, but how we received all the revenue to make us have so much in our fund balance.
Sure, and as a reminder, the town currently has 40.6 million in fund balance in its general fund. I was asked to provide some information for this meeting, including some scenarios with general fund fund balance calculations, I'll go over that in a second. Any outstanding CIPs, capital improvement projects, which there's always a long outstanding list. I was asked about estimated, where we're at in fund balance right now in some of the other major funds. The only thing I would point out on that is, being mid-year, I wouldn't, it's not very helpful mid-year. For instance, if you remember, fleet reserve actually is going to be down to under 600,000 with once all the vehicles are purchased this year. The capital projects is going to be, once, you know, projects keep going, there's actually pretty much no money available there. So, there's really no other money in those funds that can be swapped around and used anywhere. But going back to page 49 in the packet, the general fund fund balance calculations. Again, I was asked, our current policy has a minimum of, it was... Right now, we have a minimum of 15%, and fund balance, 15% of the current budget, and 20% is the goal. And the council is considering whether to move those goalposts at all. So, looking at the GFAO, two months or 16.67, if that was your minimum or maximum, that's 25,872,651. That leaves, that would be, if that was your adopted, we'd be about 14.7 million beyond that. 17% is about 20, not much different, 26,000, 26,390,000. About 14.2 million over. 20%, which is our current goal, is 31,47,000, which is about 9.5 million that we have in there currently over that amount. And then it goes on for a couple of, 22%. It's about 6.4 million over, 24%, about 3.3, and 25%, about 1.7. And then, again, the next page just has a list of outstanding capital projects, though many of them we don't have firm costs on at this point. And some are want-to-do, not necessarily absolutely have-to-do.
Thank you. But if it, I'm going to start off with saying that I would like to move the policy, the 15% that we have in our policy at the minimum, move that up to 17. And that will cover us at the 16.67 that is advised to be at, at least two months of expenses. And I would like to leave the general fund surplus exceeding 20% on the budgetary basis will be reviewed annually, I'd like to leave that at 20. And I've been thinking about this, and trying to come up with some kind of idea on how to move forward. And it is possible that, Mr. Burt, that we can put some of this money, allocate it towards something, even if we're not spending it, but putting it into an account saying it is for something, for example, let me just state, Bridge and Transportation Account. We can put funding into that in case something comes up that we might have to pay for a bridge, or certain transportation needs, is that correct? Even sidewalks, if we want to do an sidewalk.
And, you know, depending on the way you form it, it would be under the capital projects and be earmarked for those purposes, and we would track it that way. Similar, sort of with ARCA, how we earmarked 1.4 million for the city, for the seawall. Now, you could go to a further extent of actually creating brand-new funds, it's a more complicated process, you know, you could create, just like we have for open space, you could create one for one side, but I think it's good enough to put it wherever you want to put it, and just earmark it.
Okay.
And then you would not go through a formal approval until you're actually ready, and through RTM and all that, until you're ready to actually spend something.
Right, so even if we put it into an account stating, saying, let's just say it's Bridge and Transportation Account, and we put some money in there, when it comes time to actually spend the money, it still has to come through the council, the RTM, it all has to be approved. And let's just say, the money is in that account, and we decide we don't need to, we want to move it from that account to somewhere else and use it for another reason. We can take it out of that account with just a vote of the council, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, with that being said, is it possible for us to use the whiteboard on the TV?
I have not used that in a long, long time. I, if I remember.
Probably just open up Excel.
I don't feel comfortable just jumping into it, it's swapping over to another screen.
Okay, all right. Wish we had.
Just to open Excel, just open Excel as.
You just want to do Excel?
Yeah, just do it there.
Okay, we'll do it in Excel, we'll do it in Excel, if you have Excel.
Do you know where to click on it at? I can't remember right now.
But you can share an Excel spreadsheet, though.
Yeah, that's fine, we're fine.
So, if we left it at, we move the policy from the 15 to the 17, we leave our base at 20, and that anything over the 20% that we would review for other purposes would leave us nine points, approximately 9.5 million dollars. I'd like to propose that we put the balance of Sutton Park, and I can give around numbers, I don't know if you want specific numbers, Mr. Burt?
Say that again?
Do you want specific numbers?
Yes.
I'm just going to say the numbers, 1472887. Tell me if you need me to repeat it.
I had already written down myself anyways.
Okay. For Sutton Park? And then put.
Oh, let me share a screen so Counsel Parker can see also.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Good idea, good idea.
I knew that, mm. Can you see that, Counsel Parker?
Counsel Parker, can you see that?
Yes, I had it enlarged, so you can see.
Okay. And then a Bridge and Transportation Account? For $3 million?
Point of information, are we using the timer, or are we just all going to have open platform for this? I just want to make sure we're all getting equal access.
And then a Sustainability and Resiliency Account? Of $1 million? A Community Improvement Account? For 700,000, and that would be for, like, parks, sidewalks, signage, repairs, et cetera. And then a Human Services Account? Have $300,000. School Property Im, ooh, that's a little much. School Property Improvement Account? Such as HVAC, roofs, paving, et cetera. And that would be 2 million? And then a Town Building Improvement Account? And that would be 1 million? And that also would be for roof, HVAC, paving, whatever, et cetera. And the total would come to?
Nine point four, nine million four seventy-two thousand eight eighty-seven.
And I, over our twenty percent would be at nine, about nine million five hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred nineteen.
Correct.
So that would be within budget, and as I stated, some of these, this money would not be spent, it would be sitting in an account because there are things that we would need, and with that, everything that I've said, I would like to make basically a motion for those numbers, as well as the move the fifteen to the seventeen and leave the twenty percent in our policy. Do I have a second?
A second for discussion.
Thank you. And, Mr. Burt, when they said they would also like us to stay within the twenty, twenty-five percent of our budget or some, you know, at least go up to twenty-five percent, having money in, in our reserves, this would also count towards?
Yeah, and that was just one of the, I think it was Fitch, if I remember correctly, but it's twenty-five percent across major accounts and, and capital projects, fleet, all those count towards that.
Right, and if something pops up, we could move things out of this account, or even just say in the next budget session, if we needed, if we didn't have any extra revenue coming in that we usually rely on to offset taxes, we could take money out of some of these accounts to use that to offset some taxes.
True, simple motion.
If necessary, correct?
Yes.
And that leaves, like, as discussed earlier, the human services account would have three hundred thousand dollars in there, so if needed during the year, we could move money because, as you said, the trust fund is basically depleting, and there would be the extra money that we could grab from. Okay, does anybody else have any? Council Pacino?
Seems to me that, Madam Mayor, thank you, it seems to me that the difference between the nine million, nine and a half million and the, and the number we just came up with, which was nine million four hundred seventy-two thousand and change, the difference is seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two. Does that seem right? Is my math right?
I did not run it yet, hold on a sec. For the twenty percent?
Yes, sir.
Equal sum, equal sum?
I just hit twenty-two and seven eleven, seven nine thousand nine thirty-two.
Ooh, that, W P pencil works. I'd like to make an amended motion to add that seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-two to the human services. In this way, we're right where we need to be for the twenty percent.
Thank you, you don't actually have to be right at twenty, just to let you know.
Thank you.
I understand your motion, thank you so much. We have an amended motion with the change on for human services to go up to seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars, moved by Pacino, seconded by Gajewski. Any other comments on that? Council Parker, you have your hand raised?
Actually, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay, Second Amendment, go ahead.
Yep, keep Sutton Park, keep the bridge, move sustainability to nine hundred, keep the community improvements at seven hundred, move.
Wait, 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 let, let Mr. Burt catch up to you.
All I'm saying is the ones that are staying, I'll tell you, ones are going to be moved in a minute, again.
So he hasn't changed sustainability, hold on one second. Sustainability to nine, what did you say, what it was in?
Nine hundred thousand.
Okay.
Community's seven hundred still. I'm going to move human services to nine hundred thousand, there's a reason behind everything, that could be for several years. School property, I want to move that to one point five, and the town building to one.
Could you tell me again what you had for the bridge and transportation?
Bridge is still three hundred, three million.
You got to move them, yeah.
Back to having seventy-nine thousand nine thirty-two left?
Did you want to discuss your amended motion? Oh, we need a second.
Second.
So I have my second?
I do.
Yeah, you have your second, moved by Parker, seconded by Gajewski, would you like to talk about your amendment?
Well, I feel that we should go ahead, and since we have, we're moving this around, we can put more into our human services account. Ooh, can't see. That way, there's no limitation on anything, and we've provided more for everyone in the community. We can pay partial on the HVAC system because we still probably have to have some funding in that and still hope to get grants. So some of this stuff, I'm reaching out, hoping that we'll end up with grants with, that there's a percentage that we have to keep, other things, we will not have that, so human services would be one of those. And sustainability will be okay, believe there's grants out there that we can use, so that's what I'm feeling, and the balance, we can hold in case of any other additional emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through the mayor, to the manager, I just have a question. So it says, I know you did the four point six million as the FYE twenty-four general fund budget as a nice round number, I'm assuming, so on the next page, it's really forty five four six two five, that's the real number, correct? That's forty five hundred forty-five thousand?
The latest number that the finance director gave me just in the last couple of weeks was the forty million six hundred thousand, that's what she has officially on, so that's what we're using.
Okay, I just want to, want to confirm that. I, I am in favor of Council Parker's motion, I think. That is, that's the one I like the most, that would be amendments on the table, so I would be in favor of that.
Council McBride, did you have your hand up?
I did, yeah.
Go ahead, Council McBride.
Thank you. I guess I'm confused because when I prepared for this meeting, I see general fund balance review, so I did all my research on the fund balance review discussion that we had previously had, so I find it awkward that now we're making decisions on putting things in the buckets that I didn't prepare for, so I think that's a separate matter. I mean, I came here prepared for general fund balance review, I have my comments on that, but to go into these particular details and budgets now, or project, I think is improper, I think we should be doing it at a different time when we all have this information in our package, because I just made a quick notes of some of the other things. We have the bridge, Grand Longway Bridge, the Amtrak Bridge, the Claude Chester, possible, Butler-related costs, athletic fields costs, community center, golf course improvements, downtown Mystic Parking, police command vehicle, all these different items that are either in our CIP or items we're discussing about, to set them up now in a designated fund, even though we cannot designate it later, I don't think is proper, so I will not be supporting any motion that designates any amounts of money at this time, because I think, my intention was to discuss the general fund balance review. With that being said, I appreciate the changes in the general fund, what the mayor put forth, but as I sent out the information to the council before, I think the range needs to be increased, and hopefully you've read some of the information I sent out, but in a nutshell, without going into detail, it recommends a higher bond balance, so I would not support a cap of twenty percent. It, it pretty much says the rating agencies, to summarize, with a rating of A, should range to fifteen to twenty-five percent, so I can't do a motion now because there's already the amounts on the floor, but I would be in favor of recommending, as the mayor did, increasing it to seventeen percent, but I think it should be established to a range of twenty-five percent with an objective of possibly twenty-one percent, which would be two and a half months, so you'd have the seventeen percent, two months operating expenses, twenty-five percent, three months operating expenses, and the reason why they go up to twenty-five percent is because of all the items I mentioned before in terms of the coastal issues that we have, and the storms, and the floods, and the hurricanes, so I would be in support of a twenty-five percent cap with a goal to maintain it at twenty-one percent, but I, so I would be in favor of utilizing the one point eight, and I think it would also be proper to do the review of that one point eight at a later time, even possibly during the budget instead of, instead of making these decisions now. Thank you.
Mr. Burt, I have a question, point of information, the twenty-five percent that's being discussed to.
All the different funds count towards that, it's not just general fund?
Can you repeat that?
It, it's not just general fund that counts towards that, that's just one component, so all these other dollars you're putting in other funds, they'll continue to count towards the twenty-five percent.
Plus some items in the CIP, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Pretty much anything that's not spent, that's floating in those funds, goes towards that twenty-five percent. Even if you allocated like CIPs, but we haven't spent it yet, they still consider that available because you could change your mind.
Your point, your question?
That, I'm assuming is on page fifty-one, the total of all funds, and it's like the last right box of fund balance, that's twenty-eight point three percent is the total fund balance of the town, correct?
Yes. Well, hold on a sec, yeah, it is.
Council Jones, did you have your hand up earlier?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through the, through the mayor to.
Let me correct that, it's not, because when you look at the adopted expenditures, really, you're only going to look at one fifty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-five million, that's what the adopted general fund is. All these other dollars combined count towards, you're only, you only compare it to your general fund budget, so you would take the, the total of all of those, well, you can't sewer, sewer operating, that could count, you'd have to decide which, you know, you'd have to look a little further at it, but it's the total of all the major funds going in compared to just the general fund adopted budget, it's not the other fund, it's not the other totals.
Go ahead, Council Jones.
So, Mike, through mayor two, Mr. Burt, can you just talk a little bit about the bond ratings and the requirements? I know we've had that conversation before, but just kind of re-remind us of what, what the three major, S and P, Fitch, and whatever the other one is.
Yeah, Moody's.
Moody's are, ask, or we, what are sort of liking us to do?
Well, one again is, which I think was Fitch, if I remember correctly, they're the ones that are looking at twenty-five percent through all the funds, up to twenty-five, that's our ideal. I can't remember if it's S and P or Moody's, one, I think it's S and P, has only fifteen percent, they haven't elevated theirs, it's fifteen percent, and the other is, I forget exactly, but it's, it's somewhere around the twenty percent. It doesn't say, it's kind of yet another different way of looking at it.
So, one question is, the number that we have, this forty point six, these are kind of floating numbers at the moment, they may be correct, maybe not, we don't really know yet.
Well, the, the odds not completed for twenty-four, it's not going to change much, but it's awfully close.
It's awfully close. When you come to budget time and you're trying to figure out the budget, we often take four million, five million, and put it towards, towards the taxes. Can you just talk a little bit about your thinking, because this now puts some, even though we can change all these numbers, it puts some restrictions on you, on your flexibility. Can you talk about what your thinking would be?
And just to note, those higher amounts have only been the last couple of years, prior to that, it was more like one point five billion, one million, so it just, we've gone elevated the last couple of years because of the bigger budget requests. Well, again, you can take the money anytime you want, what we would do going to the budget is Dee would analyze, for one thing, we'd look at CIPs, is there any money that could be swept out? Have we collected better than we thought on tax dollars so far for the year, are we coming up, you know, so it's just hard to know where's that going to be at, you know, there could be some other money by that point, and if not, you'd have to decide if you want to take a little bit out of that, but that five million range has only been the last couple of years, just because we've had such good year, you know.
So, let's just say you took five million, you may just take five million and spread it across those.
Right, well, yeah, you got, the town council would decide how you want, you know, let's say I recommended, you know, using fund balances, usually I only do it for general fund, but I could, I could make the recommendation that we use various fund balances to whatever amount, and the council could always say, okay, we'll do that, and we'll decrease this, or we'll decrease that one.
I guess my concern is, and I think I'm kind of siding a little bit with Council McBride on this, is that this just puts a wrapper around each of these accounts and makes people hold on to them, and they become special for everybody, and it's hard to sort of pull them apart or take money out of them. I'm, I'm okay on, you know, maybe like the bridge and transportation account, you know, because we know that's coming, but some of the other ones are just, would just seem like we're splitting up the money for split the money up, and I just concerned that when it comes time to give you the flexibility to move the money you need around, suddenly these things become precious.
Just keep in mind, if you go to twenty-five percent fund balance, that takes away all my flexibility, then we're really locked in.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the, I don't have a problem with the, going to seventeen, I don't have a problem with the twenty, I think that's, that's fine.
I mean, how you, what you do here is entirely up to the council, however, the one thing I would say about Sutton is you just allocated two hundred and forty-two thousand, which is not enough to do anything, and you really need to at least put a little bit of this towards Sutton Park, at least, to finish up the playground or something, yeah, because we don't, otherwise it was pointless putting money towards Sutton Park.
Right, and I don't have a problem putting money there, I'm just a little concerned that these get locked in and they become, as I say, they become precious, and we can't get the money out of it, you're having to make a decision which one of these rates more than, than other ones, and.
I'd make a recommendation, I'd probably make a recommendation where to take it from and how things are, you know, hopefully by that point, we'll be hearing something about the, you know, the orphan bridge, that kind of thing.
Right, I mean, it just sort of takes all flexibility away as opposed to sort of assigning some to, to account, and then the rest of it.
It doesn't take flexibility, it just, it's not taking flexibility away.
It, I just sort of say.
It just gets a little confusing.
Yeah, it's a little confusing, and because you have to come back and sort of, you have to, some people have a favorite on one thing and not on another thing, so it's sort of, now you have a struggle to undo some of this stuff that you've sort of reassigned, so. I'm kind of halfway between Council McBride's and, you know, taking some of it, but not assigning all of it to, like, it's really all just, they'll divide it up, so.
Entirely up to the council.
You have a second?
Hold on.
I would, I just would like to respond to that very quickly, on page fifty is a list of a lot of the expenses that will be coming up in the future, and most, all of these expenses fit into these, fit into this, so although we don't have prices for them at the moment, we're going to need the money in the future, so it's basically like sort of allocating it now towards those type of things, so when the budget comes, Mr. Burt has some of that money there for it and can say, hey, we're going to use, you know, town building improvements when we finally get to some of the, like, police station HVAC, or their roof, or the annex roof, and that's, it's to put it there and to hold it, and so it's being, that's where, and this money comes out of the two thousand twenty-four budget, this is leftover from two thousand twenty-four budget.
Correct.
This isn't our two thousand twenty-five budget that we're currently in, we don't know what kind of extra revenue we're going to get from that.
Right.
So, basically, after the two thousand twenty-four budget is taken care of, we're supposed to relook at this, over what's twenty percent, and how, what are we going to do with it? So this money could actually be spent right now, we could spend all of it. So instead of spending it, we're putting it aside, saying, we have future expenses, and these are probably what they should go towards, and Sutton Park would be something that you would actually spend the money on right now, and the other things would basically be saying, these are for future expenses, instead of spending it.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So I just wanted to clarify that. So I just wanted to clarify that. Counsel Board Line.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I kind of aligned with Counselor Jones and McBride. I find this kind of arbitrary. The stuff that I came prepared for was to discuss the, all of these accounts and look at those priorities. And yet, we already have the consensus, and I'm just kind of perplexed in my own mind, trying to understand that three counselors spoke and the same seven accounts are the ones being considered, and not anything else or not anything less. So I'm just kind of confused because there's multiple accounts. So for example, I could propose that we move money within three accounts, but yet, there's the same seven being spoken. Just a little arbitrary for me. Maybe I missed something, I don't know. But I also, too, did not come prepared to move things into these particular seven pockets or any of these pockets. I thought we were going to discuss those, see what the upcoming needs were, look at the funds. As far as the numbers go, absolutely, I think that we should, you know, at least make 17 percent. I can agree with those numbers, absolutely. But moving them into these, I'm a big fan of human services, so obviously, I'm all for putting money into that fund, but I'm just not sure, without taking a deeper dive and only having two chances to speak tonight, in less than six minutes, come up with a plan and move tons of money into these particular accounts unbeknownst. So for me, I do not feel that, so I guess my question is, why these particular seven and not the other ones on this list or the other accounts that was mentioned? Because I would have a whole different list possibly. I just, I don't know, I feel like we already started creating a consensus and, you know, on the same seven. Not one person only offered three accounts or five accounts, or even one account or two, or I guess I missed something. And I just, again, like Counsel McBride stated, I'm not saying exactly, but I feel I was, we were going to go through all of these ones that are up and coming and talk about those and talk about the numbers we want to set the fund balance, which I'm comfortable doing tonight, but definitely was not ready to start throwing money into seven. Why not go 10 accounts? Let's split that up over 10 accounts. Or how about five? I guess I don't understand the rationale on how we're getting to these particular seven out of this list or other lists that could be a priority. I think that needs to be a deeper dive discussion, but setting the parameters for the numbers and the percents we want to, absolutely. But in here, no way did it say, be prepared to move the remaining money of the 2024 budget and put it into these buckets, pockets, accounts as we saw fit based on the need sheet. That was not clearly stated in this, no offense, just for, you know, clarifying. And if I felt like that, I would have came prepared to throw away my numbers into areas and pockets where I felt they should go. So I, too, don't feel prepared in that respect. I was ready to talk about the counts and also talk about the percents and levels that we should be looking at for our ratings. I'll take my time next time after. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll respond to that. At our October 8 meeting, we had a discussion on this, and we asked about CIPs that we could fund. We discussed a bunch, and it was all part of the, what are we going to do with this overage? Are we going to change the policy? And what should we do with the overage? As to why we have this many accounts instead of a certain number, this is what I came up with. And I think some people that made amendments chose to just make amends, and I cannot speak for those people, but I would assume that they're making amendments based on something that I had originally put out on the floor. And that is the rationale. But I do recall at that original meeting, it was told to come prepared. And we requested CIP lists and things of other, whatever we could do with the money. That was the initial, like, to understand what the credit agencies were asking for, to understand that we have a policy, did we want to change it? And what do we want to do with any kind of overages? And I would also like to say, if you want some rationale, Sutton Park, that would finish funding Sutton Park, 100 percent. And that is a goal of this council, and that would be a completion of a goal. The bridge and transportation, there is an orphan bridge, and there are other bridges and culverts and other things in our community that need to be taken care of. Bridge and transportation, 3 million, that's why that number was put there. Sustainability and resiliency, it was said during the meeting on October 8 that they stated that they wanted to see money put aside for resiliency.
Point of order, any timing?
I am responding to your question. You wanted my rationale. You asked my rationale. When you spoke...
I asked that you take your tone down.
You are out of order now. You are out of order. I do not recognize.
I'd like to point of order.
I am responding.
Can you acknowledge my point of order?
What is your point of order?
That we're not keeping time, and I don't feel it's being evenly distributed.
When you directly question...
I didn't ask you a direct question.
Yes, you did.
I spoke broadly.
You asked what the rationale was. Why is there seven? Where do these numbers come from? And I am responding to your questions.
Point well stated.
Community improvement account, parks, things of that nature, $700,000. It is listed in our needs of what we need. Human services account, it was just tonight where people wanted to put money into human services from the ARPA money, and this was an opportunity to put some money aside there. School property, Mr. Burt, how much is the HVAC systems at the school has requested? What is the total? Potentially 5 point something million dollars, right?
Well, that, just for Fitch High School, it's just over 5 million. It's 2.3 million for Charles Barnum. And then they have the air handling, air quality fixes for about 2.2 million for Northeast Academy and Catherine Kolnasky. So you're really talking about, if you're counting all that, about 9.5 million?
9.5 million. So I thought maybe 2 million towards, putting towards HVAC for future needs would be wise. Town building improvements, it also states on here, all the building HVAC and roofs and things of that nature, which they don't have any funding for yet, or a number, that it would be wise to put a million dollars towards town. These are numbers that we are going to probably have in our future, and instead of putting it to offset taxes potentially this coming year, you put it aside because these expenses are coming down the line, and we will not have to tax our taxpayers because this is already here, and we can put it towards the things that are needed right now. That's my rationale. Counsel Board Line.
Just a point of privilege, I just hope that everyone gets the same amount of time to respond to everybody else if there's a question and not use time, but that doesn't seem to happen. Again, as stated, it's not about where you're allocating it and that these seven ones was consensus that seems to be following. It's about the way it was stated in the packet. It was a review that we weren't going to actually allocate, we were going to talk about the numbers. But that's what I've heard, and I've heard some say the same thing, so...
Your point of order?
I don't believe, there was a consensus yet. It was just agreement where if someone moved a motion and it was agreed upon, there's no consensus at this time because we have not voted on anything. So if we could stop using the word consensus, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. My understanding of consensus is not a vote, so, but I'll just say, the algorithm currently looks as if these same seven accounts are the ones of interest, which is up on the screen. Again, I can understand that the mayor put these forward, and other people have numbers that fit those...
Would you like to see my work that I did before this meeting? Is that how I wrote it on my paper? Does that satisfy you?
I don't know what your intentions are, but you're...
I'd like to take a recess. It is 9:29. We will come back in 10 minutes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, we're back from recess. It is 9:40. Council Board Line, you have the floor.
Again, not drawing any conclusions or assumptions. I'm just simply saying I am aware that the seven objects were put out here and everybody else makes suggestions based on the seven. I just think that we need more time to go through these. And as I asked the town manager, it's not directly stated that we were going to go in this format tonight, but it doesn't say we weren't either. And so with that, I just ask for some forgiveness and some time. Let's talk about the percents. Let's talk about these accounts and where we think we might want to put things. But I don't think it's indicative that we do it tonight. And I'm just concerned that why the seven, I know someone stated their opinion on those seven and then other people added their support of those seven in different ways, which is fine, respect that. But I feel there's more to this than just these seven accounts. And I think that we need to fully vet this and take our time. And again, I can agree to increasing the percent to 17%. But beyond that tonight, I think we're not, for me, I don't feel like I am being, I'll speak for myself, fiscally responsible tonight under a short target here with two turns to speak without it properly stating that we're going to go through this. This is a deliberation of tax dollars and money. So for me, that's where I stand. And I'll be voting against this tonight, not because of the numbers, but because of the process. Thank you.
Mayor, just to make it clear to the audience, this doesn't actually spend any money. It's just loosely flagging them, yeah?
Sutton Park is spending money.
That's later, though. At this point, it's not.
Right.
Point of information?
Your point of information?
What binding, once we vote to move these in there, what's our binding on that?
It's just earmarked. In order to actually spend it, you have to go through an actual process to approve it. So...
Right. And I just don't feel comfortable on a whim like this. Thank you.
Council Baccina?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was gonna say, we're not spending a dime today, but somebody stole my thunder over there.
Sorry.
But I am totally in favor of what's been suggested here with the motion and the two amendments. There are nine people up here, one of which is the mayor, and she did her due diligence to do something. We all could have done something like this, but we didn't.
Point of order?
Madam Mayor did.
Point of order?
Your point of order?
Please don't imply intent. That was, I don't feel that's fair. Please, thank you.
Well taken. Thank you.
I could have done something like this, but I didn't. Madam Mayor did, and that's why she's the mayor. That's why we elected her mayor, for her to do these things. I don't want to be doing this late at night while she's up late at night. I'm sleeping. This is a lot of work. And that's why she's sitting in the center chair. So none of this, again, is spending a dime. I do this, basically, the same thing at home. I have a mortgage account. I have a Christmas account. I have a spending money account. I got all kinds of different accounts that I just put the money in. None of it is inaccessible to me. I can move my money through all the different accounts, and nothing's being spent. We're just earmarking it. It's not a big deal. It's just money that we're not going to see right away. I mean, I liked not looking at the big pot and saying, oh, look at all that, and then forgetting all those little things. We're just earmarking it for the little things. And now we're looking at a pot of money that's going to be our 20%, roughly. I got no issues with this list at all. And if next week or the week after, somebody wants to suggest an eighth item or suggest taking something off, move the numbers around, we'll do it. It's not that big of a deal. I don't know why we're getting wrapped around the axle here. This is not a big deal. And with that, I yield.
Thank you.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Yes?
Am I allowed to make another amendment?
No, not at this time. We have a motion with two amendments.
That's what I thought. And then also, point of parliamentary inquiry. What is the number, how many speaking turns have each councillor and the mayor taken?
On this amended motion, amended number two, you have, you're allowed two turns. You've had one.
Okay.
Would you like to say it right ahead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the, actually, the earmarking money. I appreciate the mayor for thinking these possible, these account funds through. I think it's a very good idea in earmarking it. However, I would, I would make an amendment, I can't, but I would, to go to 22%, not 20%, just in case I thought, just in case somebody thought of a different fund, just having that little extra buffer money. So what I would prefer is to kind of go lower in each account. And I've had those numbers there. But so that's all I want to state for the record. And thank you, Madam Mayor. You're back.
I just want to make sure I understand. So you're not saying change, are you saying change the policy 22%? Or just for now, just leave 22% in the fund?
No, the, back to the mayor. No, I would say leave 22% in the fund, and then the policy would be 17%, 20%. That's what I would be in favor of. So just kind of not earmarking all 9 million tonight, kind of saving a little money in case we do come up with other funds, in case there is an emergency that we don't foresee.
Thank you. Council McBride?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because earlier tonight it said that I set some amount of 25%. That's not what I meant to say if I said it. What my recommendation would have been, or motion if there wasn't two on the floor, was to set a range of the policy from 17 to 25 with a target of 21%. That would give, the range would flow from two months to three months with the target of 21%. And by doing that, it would give this council and town manager Bert flexibility to do as he chooses with a larger amount of money. So we wouldn't be in this situation right now where we're over a certain amount. We have to make decisions. It would be within the range at all times, but we, the council, would try to maintain the target rate. If that was approved, it would give us more flexibility. If we approve the target rate of 21%, it would still leave us $8 million of excess that were over that we can then decide. We could keep it in there if we wanted to. If there was something we knew, let's say there was some law case that we knew was coming down the pike, it would give us the ability to increase that amount to 25%. It would also give the ability to decrease the 17%. But recommendations are to have a range and then a target. So that was the reason for my recommendation for a target of 21%. With that being said, and again, I can't make a motion, but I would, I see there's just, in regards to spending, we're not preparing to spend the money. I think we are, because I think the discussion that I'm hearing is we're preparing to spend the money on Sutton Park the next item on the agenda. So if the overriding objective of what we're trying to do is to set this money up for Sutton Park, I would support and be in favor of setting aside the 1.5 money to go to Sutton Park, which will allow us to do the Sutton Park if that was, if that was to be approved. But it wouldn't earmark all these other things that I think are not necessary at this time until we have further discussion. So I understand, and I appreciate the mayor's work on her level of due diligence in detail. I just think, I differ on allocating money that doesn't need to be allocated now. And I differ on the current motions on the floor in terms of the fund balance. I think going from 17 to 25 with a target of 21 makes much more sense. It gives us more flexibility to act as we act in the future or any other future council. So that was the reasoning, that's where I stand. And I can't make a motion, but that's where I think makes the most sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of information?
I'd just like to clarify one thing. It's not allocating the money, because in my mind, allocating the money is giving it to them to spend. In my mind, it is earmarking it. It is setting it there, letting it, it's basically having it in its own little savings account.
No, I understand that.
And not using it until this council decides to use it, and it can be moved. So allocating, I figure, in my mind, allocating is different. It is actually putting it, and they're saying you have, it's like putting it in somebody's budget and they're allowed to spend it.
I understand. I mean, what I was gonna say was maybe allocate it all into, except for the Sutton Park, allocate it all into the capital reserve fund, because that's where all of those projects are. So anyway.
But I believe, Mr. Bert, the agencies want to see that we are doing things for resiliency. They want to see that we're putting things away to plan for certain things. Is that correct, from what I'm understanding?
That is part of it. They want to know you're planning for it, yes.
There are numerous different levels of what all these agencies are looking for, and this is part of it. They want to see that you're putting away for some of these issues, especially that we're planning. Because as it was discussed in that previous meeting, maybe you could say it much wiser than I can, but something about how our revenue comes in and it is based off of residents more so, and how is that, how is it, you said it so much better than I did.
I'm not sure which part you're talking about.
How are we getting our tax revenue? However, tax revenues comes in, and they want to see that we have backup plans in case there's an issue. Is that correct?
I mean, that's every bond rating agency with everyone. They certainly want to know you're preparing for something, either big happens for expenditure or big happens to decrease your, you know, electric boat suddenly moves away. They want to know you have a plan and ability to adapt. But Connecticut's generally set up pretty well because we have flexibility. You know, some places or states are restricted on what you can do through property taxes in terms of how much can go up. We've got some flexibility here, which helps us, but...
Thank you. Council Jones?
So my point of administration is, I just want to make sure I understand, Council McBride's, so yours is 17% to go up?
17, which represents two months of operating expenses.
And then you're...
Maxed out at 25. For the range, though, not the target. That's just the range that gives you flexibility.
And your target would be 21?
21, just two and a half months of expenses.
So 17 on the bottom, 21 on the...
25.
But the 25 on the top.
The council would have to act if it was above 25%.
So you're saying raise the 20 to 21. Raise the 15 to 17 and the 20 to 21? Is that correct?
Yes, the 15 to 17, the cap to 25, or the target of 21. Anything, I mean, that's really what we're looking at.
Anything from 21 point something to 25?
Actually, we just range the 20 to a 21. I'm setting a target of 21, but creating flexibility on both ends.
Can I, can I jump in?
Just want to make sure.
You have three things going on when our policy has two things basically going on. We have a bottom line, never go under 15. And then we have a 20, which says anything over 20, we will look at on how we want to spend it.
Yeah, and I'm saying revise the policy to be a range versus...
So you're saying the bottom line would be 17?
17, two months.
And anything over what we would look to spend?
25, but anything, anything around...
So you're looking, basically, our, what we have in our policy as 20, you want to move to 25?
I'm not sure. I want the upper band to be 25, but not the target. I want the range of the, of the, of the fund to be from 17 to 25. We don't have to act if it's within that range at any time, but we should try to get around 21. So it's more of a range, so it gives you more flexibility. But you're still always honing in on that target, that 21, which is, I think what you're saying is the 20.
We try to get to 21, but from the 21 to the 25 is kind of a buffer.
Exactly. So if a law case is coming down, if it's something that we know is going to happen, if electric boats, you know, whatever it is, we don't have to act. We can just let that money go up to 25% without us making a formal...
Peel off.
Peel, yes.
Okay, I understand.
So your buffer is 20 to 25? Your buffer is not the 15 to 20 right now?
The range would be 17 to 25. But the target, the ideal target?
Is 21.
Is 21.
It's...
I'm probably using a different nomenclature than what's in our policy, but it would be a range. So at all times...
I know, but I'm having a hard time understanding, like, how we would implement that. So if we said to Mr. Bert, how would, hey, Mr. Bert, here's your, like, how would we say, here's the count, here's, how would he go to the, to the rating agencies and say, say this? I don't get it. He would be like, we have ranges, and I don't know if, we have bottom lines right now, like...
It would change the policy to have a range. And that's what they're recommending, have a range, because it gives you more flexibility. Instead of it being a specific number, it's saying, your fund balance should always be between 17 and 25. But you should target 21. Year in and year out, you're trying to hover on 21. But, you know, what if Sandy gets again, that 21 is going to go to 17? If it goes under 17, then you got to increase your bill rate. You know there's differences, but it gives you a range. I don't know if that's making sense. I don't know.
It makes sense, but I'm not sure it's manageable.
Well, it makes it more manageable. The only action that we would have to take is if you, if like, right now, we're, we would have to get rid of 1.8. We could get, you could take the eight, like, if the council wanted to say, let's be at 21%, or even, you know, that's a target, you would have $8 million of excess. But you wouldn't be forced to do anything except for the 1.8.
Point of information? Your question? Your point of information?
Whose turn is it to speak?
Council Jones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so... All right, so this is, I'll just put down where I'm at on this conversation. I like the 17. And I think because of the rating agencies want everything above 20, I'm okay with either the 21 or the 22 that Council Gieske said. I think there's too many categories. I still will come back and say, these things get locked in and they can become precious. Even in the conversations we've had here, sometimes they're flexible moving around, and other times it's like, oh, no, we're not going to be able to touch them. So even in this conversation, we're already doing that, from my point of view. So I know we have Sutton Park. I'm in favor of Sutton Park. I like kind of what councillor Russ said. We allocate a couple of them and let the less of it just be floating money that we use. We can always come back and do it. We have the freedom to spend as we need. And town manager Bert puts these things forward, and we have discussions on them. But I'm just nervous about, after we leave today, these things become kind of locked in, even though they're not locked in, but people will still treat, in my view, people will still treat them that way. Having gone through the ARPA process and watching how things became so precious to people, and people wouldn't bend on them, I just, that's my worry, that'll end up being long discussions on these other topics when we need more flexibility. Sutton Park aside, I think that's okay. I could even go to the bridge, because I know that's coming. But the other ones, I don't, just don't want to lock them up. I know it's all over the place, but that's...
Point of information? Your question? I just want to be clear on my notes. I don't think councillor Russ spoke yet, so I was just trying to understand councillor Jones's comment for councillor Ross.
So I'll just make it that it's, my view is, I like having flexibility in that account and not locking everything up. I'm okay with the first two items. I think they're, I know we have Sutton Park, and we're kind of committed to that. I know we have the bridge coming, and that's coming relatively quickly on us. So we're going to have to spend that money. The rest of them...
I'm hoping not.
Hoping. We're hoping not. And then we can just put it back. But I don't like tying everything else up. That's all. That's my view on it, so...
So my point of information, did councillor Russ speak, just because I don't have the notes here? I just, a comment was made by councillor Jones that was Russ, councillor Russ's opinion, and I'll back it out. Okay. I just want to make sure, because I didn't know if I fell asleep, because councillor Russ hasn't spoken yet.
What is your point of information? What is your question?
Councillor Russ hasn't spoken on this item yet.
I know. I have it written down on my list.
But my point of information is councillor Jones spoke...
Just back it out.
...in favor of what councillor Russ stated on this opinion, but she hasn't spoken yet.
You misspoke.
Oh, so I'm just trying to make sure I didn't miss something. That's all. Okay. Where did that opinion come from? Because we, you're here. Thank you.
You are so out of order. You are very inappropriate. You should not do the motivations of other councillors, and you should not speak of other councillors in such a manner.
That's not what I said. I was asking...
Your final comments were enough. Thank you. You do not have the floor anymore. Thank you.
Just want to make sure councillor Russ...
You do not have the floor. You're out of order.
Okay.
Are you all set, Mr. Jones?
Hi.
Thank you. Councillor Russ?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been very quiet pretty much throughout this, because I'm just trying to take everything in. I, I agree with the 17 to 20% or even 21%. I'm fine with that. I would not want to go above that. I think it stops the ability to move money when needed. I am fine with Sutton Park. I am good with the bridge, because I remember the conversation of, we do not have $2 million to spend on a bridge. So if we need to put, those were my words, if we need to have that money, I'm okay with allocating that. Sustainability and resiliency, I think we need to start putting money aside for sustainability and resiliency. I have no problem putting that in an account. I'm going to ask this question through the mayor to manager Bert. When you look at, like, the fleet reserve, is there any difference between the fleet reserve fund and one of these funds?
Say it again, please.
So we have a fleet reserve fund.
Right, which is only for buying vehicles.
I'm sorry.
That's only for buying vehicles.
Correct. Is there any difference between that and creating a sustainability and resiliency fund?
Well, if you want to create a fund, well, you know, we've created a housing fund. We've created an open space fund. There's other ones. You could certainly create one. Otherwise, you would put it under capital projects and just earmark it.
So this is not as controlled as the fleet reserve fund?
No.
Okay. Because the fleet reserve fund, once money goes in there, pretty much stays there, correct?
I mean, you could take it out, but yes, pretty much, yes.
I feel like all of these, these funds are things that all of the CIPs that we're looking at could probably fall into one of these funds. So I understand the rationale behind it. I'm struggling with allocating this much money.
For not allocating?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I'll correct myself. I'm struggling with earmarking this much... I'm struggling with earmarking this much money at one time. There are already a main motion, an amendment, and a second amendment, so I can't make another amendment. So I would make the recommendation at this point that we start voting on these, and then if somebody has another amendment that we put it up, I'm also noting that it is 10:02 at night, and that, that it's getting late. I'm just gonna say it like that. So I, I'm definitely in favor of at least the top three that are on there, and I know we have some different numbers, mainly the same. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Thank you. I withdraw my motion and make a new amendment.
I will withdraw my second.
I make a motion. Was that okay, Madam Mayor?
Yep, you, it was, the second was removed by Gajewski as well.
Okay. I will make a motion for the following, for Sutton Park, for the $1,472,887, for the bridge and et cetera, $3 million. I'm still going to keep the sustainability at $9,000.
$900?
For the rest of the money, to be discussed at a further date, set by the mayor and the town manager, for a further discussion on the agenda item. So, yeah, that's my motion.
Second. Moved by Parker, seconded by Russ.
Does she want to do the percentage?
Point of information? Your point, your question?
I just wanted, through the mayor, to the council, are we leaving the percents the same? I just want to make my notes a clean.
She did not amend her motion with any change to the percentages.
So they'd be as written?
As the main motion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, do, would you like me to add? I would like it at the 17 and 20, if we have to.
That's on the main motion, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was already seconded by Russ. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, it's just more of a question. There's one motion on the floor, so this one motion includes both aspects, right? The percentage and the allocation? Or are there two separate?
The main motion has the percentages as well as the numbers, and Counselor Parker made an amendment to some of the numbers, and the percentages still remain.
Okay, just for the record, I would support the allocations or the earmarks, but I don't support the percentages, so I'll have to abstain from this one.
Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. No, I do think this is a lot of deliberation that has to happen. I can appreciate Counselor Parker's compromise, a motion by removing one and getting some other ideas on the table. I'm, you know, you know, I really want time to discuss these accounts to really determine what we're gonna earmark, because I also do think that, you know, human services is very vital as well. I can see Sutton Park, because that's a moving park that needs to be moving. Obviously, the bridge, because that's been big up and coming and talked about, and I'm a big fan of sustainability. So I'm just not sure what those numbers should look like tonight without the proper dialogue. I'm not sure how I feel on the 17 and 20 percent either. I honestly think that, so the numbers that I had come with tonight, which I don't have a chance to put a motion on the floor, I actually had 18, and then 21 was mine, but I haven't had a chance to put those down, was my, and I had some reasoning behind that, but I just still don't feel comfortable earmarking money in this, in this capacity, this amount of money. And again, I just think we need more time. I'm not sure, I guess, through the mayor to the manager, if we were to, like, table this or move it to a definite date and come back with the intentions that we're gonna move this money, where, when would that be fitted, and when could we do that? That's my question.
So if we didn't complete it, when could it be? I'd have to look at the agenda with the mayor.
I just think, I mean, I don't see the urgency, I mean, I guess that's my next question, is there an urgency today?
Well, I would say the Sutton Park has an urgency, because if we postpone this to November, it probably wouldn't come to a December vote, and you have to have contracts signed by the end of the year.
So, again, I think that the Sutton Park could be an isolated discussion item on the agenda, which would have been helpful for tonight, and then...
That's the next item.
Right, but I mean, it could have been isolated under the general fund to talk about that particular item as this. I just don't feel comfortable doing all of this in one big, you know, you know, slate group. I think the Sutton Park by itself, fine, if you want to, want to do that, I can support that motion tonight, and let's talk about it. And then we can talk about the percents and the rest of them, and earmark goes at a later date, because I don't feel those are time sensitive. So if that's the motivation, or if that's something that has a driver behind it, then let's, let's talk those. Other than that, I think the rest of it, we just need a little bit more time. I can appreciate the numbers that people have presented tonight, and it's not for lack of people not wanting to do it, and it doesn't change what seat you're on up here. I think it's a joint effort of people coming up with ideas and collaboration, that's what makes the full council as an elected body, and I just think we need a little bit more time with this. So that's just my thought, and, yeah, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Think we need a little visual. I have a fund balance of seven pens. If I put one here and six here, I still have a fund balance of seven pens. If I do two, two, and three, I still have a fund balance of seven pens. If I do three, two, four, and one, I still have a fund balance of seven pens! Why are we still doing this? Nothing changes. We're not spending a dime.
Point of order? Your point of order?
I'll yield my time.
I just asked that we give full, like, people raise their voice and others, you know, I just asked that the voice, life control is the same for everybody, the passion, so no debarers were thrown, but...
Well taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move the vote.
All right, Counselor Russ has called for the vote. We have to vote on this? Seconded by Parker. We need two-thirds vote. All right. All those in favor to call the question?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Bordelon? Abstain, abstentions? All right, so that passes seven to two to zero, with Bordelon and Gajewski opposed. All right, so we will vote on the second amendment on the floor.
Can you request a roll call vote?
Sure can.
Point of information?
Your question?
Can you just, for clarity, read exactly what that amended motion is?
I was going to.
I'm just, I wouldn't say you are, I'm just asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on one second, because I had to write down... All right, so we are going to vote on the second amendment first. That is on our screen. It is right there where it says Sutton Park, $1,472,887. Bridge and transportation account would be 3 million, sustainability and resiliency would be 900,000. That comes to a total of $5,372,887. That would change the percentages in our policy from 17 percent to 20 percent, which is the same as the main motion. All right, roll call vote. Counselor Bordelon?
No.
I am a yes. Counselor Gajewski?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
No.
Counselor Merritt?
Abstaining.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Pacina?
Yes.
Counselor Russ?
Yes.
All right, so that is one, two, three, four, five, six, to two, to one, with McBride and Bordelon opposing, and Counselor Merritt abstaining. Now we'll vote on the, the motion with, the amendment with the main motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstaining.
The, it passes six to two to one, with McBride and Bordelon opposed, and Merritt abstaining. Up next on our packet. Yes.
Just a reminder, you have to vote. Since it's past 10, I do ask the council to wrap this, to continue.
Thank you. It is past 10 o'clock. We have one item left on our agenda, which is the Sutton Park redevelopment master plan It's after 10 o'clock, so we have to vote to continue. All those in favor of continuing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We will continue. All right, so on page 52 is, we have Sutton Park renovations.
And just as a reminder, you allocated out of ARPA earlier this evening, 242,246, leaving a needed amount, if you wanted to do the entire project and wrap it up, $1,472,887.
Point of information?
Madam Mayor? Your question?
Is that, in this referral, we have a number of 1715, is that adding the 1.4 plus what we allocated earlier? Is that...
Prior to doing anything, you needed 1.7, 1.7. You then already allocated tonight 242, so you deduct that from the 1.7.
Okay, and then the balance is the 1.4.
That leaves 1.47.
Okay, that's what I want to know. That's the real number at the bottom there. And we've, with this thing and what we've already done with it.
Yep.
Okay.
Counselor Russ?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to recommend allocating 1, $1,472,887 to complete the Sutton Park renovation.
Seconded.
Wait, wait, wait. People are speaking, they don't have the floor. Counselor Russ?
From the Sutton Park, allocated funds from the...
Excuse me.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Russ, seconded by Gajewski. Thank you. Do we have any conversation? Counselor Pacina?
Just a correction, earmarked funds. Earmarked funds, not allocated.
You're correct. I will take that and resign.
I'll second that.
It will not be part of the...
Recommend.
Anybody else have any comments? Counselor Gajewski?
It feels good to finally, I hope, I, I will be in favor of this motion, but it does, it will feel good to me to complete this project. I know many in the community have been advocating for this, and I know this is one of our council goals, and I am super excited to take this vote. And I thank everybody who has contributed to the discussion and the work on the town side and the council side, and that's it for me. Go back.
Thank you. All right. Can you stop sharing the screen?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so I also have to agree with you, Counselor Gajewski, like, the first, the background in our packet says, the town has been renovating Sutton Park in stages since 2022. We have piecemealed all the money we could find in different ways. Every time we had some extra money, we tried to put it towards it so we can get this done, and I am proud to say that this is the final step, and one of our number one goals was to take care of Sutton Park, and this was, this will be an achievement that we can hang our hat on. So I'm very proud of that. All right, so, voting on 2024-877-1, Sutton Park renovations, allocating $1,472,887 from the fund balance fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, opposed.